Hello, good morning. It is eight thirty and so I'm going to call the council meeting of March twenty fifth to order. We have an agenda that's in front of you. Are there any additions to that agenda? Councilor Christie.
A quick report on community futures and committee reports.
Okay, so nine point one, community futures. Deputy Reed McGee.
A report on, oh, sorry, report on Cape and I'm sure all of us would like to talk about RMA.
So nine point two, Cape, nine point three, RMA. Any other additions? Councilor Christie.
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, we so we have a motion to move the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The minutes from the March eleventh meeting were pre circulated. Any errors or corrections? Councilor Phobes.
Nine point one, Neale Housing Authority is missing under the additions. It shows up correctly under the council and committee reports.
Okay, so one point, one point one additions to the agenda. Is that where you're referring to? So nine point one would be Neale Housing.
Correct, but in the minutes at the beginning it was missing when we had.
Additions to the agenda.
Yeah, that part was missing.
All right. Any other, go ahead, please, Ms. Vanderkuh.
Neale Housing was already part of the agenda, so it wasn't an addition to the agenda.
Okay. All right, thanks for that clarification, appreciate it. All right, so there's no amendments to the minutes. I would be looking for a motion to approve as presented. Councilor Christie.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the adoption of the minutes from the March eleventh regular council meeting as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Excuse me. The first item in our agenda will be four point one, request from Three Hills Cruise for the water truck. And welcome, Mr. Conken. And anytime you're ready, Mike.
Thanks, counsel. We, Neale County has received a request from Three Hills Cruise Committee to supply a water truck for their drag races at the airport for 2025. We supply, they're requesting approximately sixty thousand liters of water to, we've provided a truck for the past three years. So our calcium tanker that we use for dust control and dust suppression there would be the truck that we would use for this. Holds approximately sixteen cubes of water per, for a legal load. And then that truck would only be used by county staff to fill the barricades. So the financial would be an operator plus the cost of the truck and water. So we figure approximately twelve thou, or twelve hundred and eight dollars to do this for the cruise committee. So the recommended motion would be that council approves the use of a water truck and an operator to supply water to fill barricades for the 2025 Three Hills Cruise weekend races.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions regarding the request for the use of the water truck? Councilor Phobes.
I think I've asked this question before, but what do we do with the water after we're done with it? Are you just dumping it in the ditches is what I think my memory reminds me of?
Yes, I believe what they do is they just release it into the airport grass there. That would be the cruise committee's end of things, so.
Um, Councilor Whitstock, please.
Just a question, does Three Hills have take fill or truck fill?
I am unaware of that for right now. We would be filling, so, sorry, I missed that in this, we would be filling our truck at the county shop.
Yeah.
Using our fill spot and then going out to the airport from there, so.
Just thought if we filled it there, truck fill, we could stiff them with the bill.
Uh, Councilor Christie.
I asked, they do have truck fill on the side of that building somewhere, but.
Okay, so the request basically is we provide the truck, the operator and the water, fill up the barricades and then our responsibility is done.
That is correct.
And the estimated cost to the county would be about twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Plus change. Okay. So any other questions or discussion? If not, what is the wish of council? See, the recommendation is that we approve. However, Council Cunningham.
I'm just wondering if Council Phobes' question about where the water goes. Is there a way that we could use it for watering like some trees that the county has? Or I think just because we're all so aware of the limited water that we have, just wondering if there's something that we could do beneficially for, for trees in the county or something.
I do not believe so, just the way those barricades are designed, it's just to drain out the bottom, so there wouldn't be really a way to collect that water. Sorry, through the chair there, but, yeah.
Councilor Cunningham.
Okay, thanks for that. So I'm happy to make the motion that council approve the use of a water truck and operator and supply water to fill barricades for the 2025 Three Hills Cruise weekend races.
Okay, thank you for that. We now have a motion that we approve the use of a water truck and operator and supply water to fill the barricades for the 2025 Cruise Weekend Races. Any further discussion to the motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Conken. All right, the next item in our agenda is five point, two point one, which would be the Brackenear Campground Picnic Shelter Design. And welcome, Ms. Sherlock.
So this morning, I bring before you the Brackenear Campground Picnic Shelter Design. So in twenty, early 2024, we found significant dry rot in the previous shelter and, which was compromising the structural integrity. And so that building was removed prior to the camping season. As per the budget passed in 2025, we have moved forward with securing quotes and selecting a contractor for the construction of a new picnic shelter at the campground. And as we do not have a, a park standard design, we are bringing before you this design for your approval. If we can go down one page. And so this is the proposed new shelter. It would be metal clad on the lower half, metal roof and then wooden beams with a concrete poured base and new foundation. And so the colors that we've proposed would be the coffee brown roof trim, soffit and interior trim and then antique linen walls, wainscoting and the interior of the walls and the interior ceiling. The recommended motion for this morning is that council approve the Brackenear Campground Picnic Shelter as, design as presented. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you for that. So are there questions? Councilor Phobes, please.
Just because I have a family who camps and we've been to many a places where there are these shelters. Will we be installing some like eye hooks on the inside so that when you have a camper there, you know they're going to put up their tarps to block the wind or the rain if they're happen to using this shelter? So will we be providing that so that they're not destroying the, with their own stuff?
We absolutely can.
Uh, Mr. Gannon, sure.
Uh, thank you through council. Any additions to this? The project actually just covers the cost to what's displayed right now. Should that be an additional item? We'd have to bring that for council consideration for approval, depending on cost to make sure that it's actually put together properly where if we're looking at those hooks or that is an opportunity around that picnic shelter at the moment. We want to make sure that we're, we're doing it appropriately for how it's used. For example, if there's smoke or if there's any barbecues or anything like that, that the access to ventilation is appropriate at same time. But it can be looked in and considered for council to approve. Right now, the budget that's proposed is quite tight to this actual construction. So I'm not sure we can incorporate it into this project, but it can be considered and brought back for consideration for council with that adaptation to it. And should we move to that adaptation? We would probably want council's consideration if this is the design we want to move forward with the entire, as we put these up potentially in other locations, that there's a consistent standard to address Councilor Phobes' concerns.
Go ahead, Ms. Sherlock.
I will note that this is not a fire located facility. This is strictly a picnic shelter. There is no stove included. But yes, it is something that we would have to run by the contractor and see what the, the cost of adding the hooks would be.
Councilor Phobes?
I just know from experience and watching people that this is what people will do. And unless we're sitting there monitoring, which we are not, I just don't want to see the building getting destroyed because someone's trying to MacGyver something up to block the wind.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
So perhaps a more logical question would be, I noticed in our old shelter, the sidewalls were quite a bit higher than what's being proposed here. And wondered if perhaps we could look at the wainscoting that goes around if we could increase the height there, which would cut down the amount of wind that would be affecting people sitting at the tables and so on. So, um, I mean, that, that might be a more practical solution. I don't know, so. Like when you compare the two pictures, I'm just looking at the old shelter and the concept design for the new one. It looks to me like there's a lot more air gap from the top of the wainscoting to the, than there was in the old.
Mm-hmm.
Structure.
Again, that's something that we can look at and we can ask the contractor what the additional cost would be of increasing that height. It is a forty-eight inch tall wall, so that's that three foot height.
Yeah, so with the six foot space at the, or six inch space at the bottom and the four foot wall, we're basically, you know, we're at fifty-four inches. The old structure just looked like it was higher than that.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. That is something that we can take back to the contractor and determine what the additional cost would be.
The other thing I guess I have to keep in mind is when you go into that. The other thing I guess I have to keep in mind is when you go into that Brackenear Campground, it is pretty sheltered. There's a lot of trees and a lot of shelter in that campground already, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and there is, so we have the existing large spruce row there, and then there's also some mature as well as some new growth spruce on that north corner too, so.
Yep. Okay, so Mr. Hogan, please, yeah.
To you, Mr. Chair. I think what we've, what the administration's heard is there, the design that's in front of you in principle, Council supports that design. We'll take a look at the suggestions. If they fit within budget, we'll incorporate them. If not, then we'll come back looking for, for an amendment in consideration from Council if they, if they don't fall within budget. There is a little bit in our, in our policies, there is a little bit of leeway that I have as a CAO. If something's a little bit over budget within reason, I can approve that directly too. So we'll take a look at all of those things, and if we can do them within the existing budget, then we'll, we will. If we need to come back to you, then we'll do that too.
Okay. So what would you be looking for us from, from today? Just an approval to go ahead and then incorporate some of the suggestions or how would you suggest we proceed?
I think if, if you approve the, if, the recommended motion is to approve the, approve the design, I think we can, we can go forward with that motion. We've heard what Council is looking for in terms of maybe some additions to that, so we'll investigate those accordingly.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Someone prepared to make a motion? Any, Counselor Whitstock?
Just a question, judging by the photo or the drawing, it shows an apron around?
Yep.
Okay, so that's where barbecues would be placed if, or we don't even want them close to there?
I would suggest not close to there. The apron will be purely just to catch the rain drip so that we're not creating a ridge around the building.
Okay, thanks.
Keep erosion of.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Counselor Phobes?
I'd make the motion that Council approve the Brackenear Camping Ground Picnic Shelter Design as discussed.
Okay. So we have a motion that Council approved the Brackenear Campground Picnic Shelter Design as discussed. Is there any further discussion, question or comment to the motion from Counselor Phobes? I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, so thank you and thank you, Ms. Sherlock, for your work on that. And we look forward to having a new shelter there. The next item on our agenda is five point two point two, which is vegetation cutting and snow plowing at Hamlet Community Centers. And again, welcome, Ms. Sherlock and Mr. Conken. Welcome back and anytime that you are ready.
Absolutely. So at the April sixteenth committee, twenty twenty-four committee, the whole meeting, we presented a request for vegetation cutting services by the Wimborne Community Center and background on those cutting services to be delivered by Neheel County, both Neheel County sites and privately owned cemeteries. The committee recommended that Council consider mowing and snowing removal agreements with the rural community halls and with, within our Neheel County hamlets. The committee also recommended that Council consider the development of mowing of private cemetery level of service after consultation with the private cemetery owners. At the December tenth Council meeting, administration presented a summary of information and options of various levels of subsidization for vegetation cutting and snow plowing services at the community halls in the hamlets. Council then requested that administration bring back additional information regarding the cost of offering the services to other community centers in the county and private cemeteries. The four privately owned cemeteries that we mow have been under the two hundred dollar a year agreement since nineteen ninety-one. These were done through a council motion and informational letters and have been included in the master rates bylaw since. There are not any current formal service agreements in place for this service. So then I went through and I contacted as many of the halls and private cemetery groups as I could get a hold of, which was most of them. So the Wimborne Hall, they have since rescinded their request. They have somebody that, they have purchased a used mower and have a local volunteer completing the work, so they're no longer requesting the service. Suawell Hall, they currently have a contractor doing the mowing. Depending on the cost of the county services, they, they would consider it, but it would also be highly dependent on cost. The Huxley Hall, currently they have a mower and volunteers that mow the Ball Diamond as per the rental agreement for the site that was privy to their building of their train station facility there for the Ball Diamond. But they find it difficult to get consistent coverage for that, from the volunteers. They've also stated that they don't have funds in place to be able to pay for mowing around the buildings that we currently do as part of a legacy service that has been taking place without an agreement around the hall and the curling rink. The Torrington Hall, we didn't hear back from. The Sunny Slope Hall, they have a volunteer group that mow it. They would, again, they would consider the county services based on the costs. The Three Hills Rural Hall, I didn't hear back from. The Orkney Hall, they mow it all by volunteers for no cost and kind of do it as a community get together, so they wouldn't necessarily be interested in that. Mountain Vernon Hall, again, it's volunteer mown. Occasionally, they hay the big field portion of it. Based on cost, they would consider the services, but it's not something that they're seeking. The Hesketh Hall, they have volunteers that are rate in Hesketh there that come and mow it and plow it. They would be more interested in the plowing services, but they currently have an appropriate setup for what they need. Moving into the cemeteries, the Mean Catholic Cemetery, I spoke to them about an adjustment in service fees and they would be able to support an adjustment to approximately six hundred to eight hundred dollars per year. Speaking with the Torrington Trinity Lutheran Church of whose members are the Troschu Lutheran Cemetery and the Torrington Zion Cemeteries, they would likely be able to support an adjustment again in that approximately six hundred to eight hundred dollars per year. And they were going to be discussing that with their members as they move through their amalgamation of the two entities. And then the Lumney Cemetery, I spoke with them and they were hoping to talk to their members, but I hadn't received their feedback as of this meeting, so. Within this discussion, there's also the existing Neheel Community Center grants. So we do provide grants to rural community halls for operation and costs, operational costs and projects. The amount for operational support are set by usage as outlined in the chart on the RFD here. As well as part of this project and the background research, we looked into some municipal benchmarking and reached out to other municipalities throughout the province through our contacts. Out of the twelve that we heard back from, there was a wide variety of arrangements, including some who own the halls but don't do the mowing, some who own the halls and do the mowing, some who don't own or mow. There's some that absorb the cost into their public land mowing program and others pay a contractor, some provide a grant directly. Others provide a rebate for county services, mowing or plowing up to a certain amount. When it came to cemeteries, there were similar mixed results, including those who don't own the cemetery but do the mowing, those who own the cemetery and do the mowing, those who own and contract out the mowing and those who don't own or mow. Many municipalities in the province provide grant funding to rural cemeteries in amounts ranging from five hundred to three thousand dollars per year for operational costs and up to five thousand dollars for capital projects. Moving into the specifics of our vegetation cutting program. So in consultation with financial services, we have assessed the cost of the current vegetation cutting program to be approximately two hundred and two dollars and twenty-one cents per hour for cutting for four staff, mowers, whippers, the mowing fuel. And then in addition for transportation to and from sites, it's about one dollar ninety-seven cents per kilometer for the two trucks, the trailers, the fuel and the four staff members to transport. Those costs are calculated for the completion of the forty-eight sites on a four-week rotation in our current vegetation cutting program. It includes all the time allocated for staff to complete the sites, including active mowing, weed whipping, the equipment maintenance and travel, as well as non-mowing related time for safety meetings, inspections, data entry, various time, staff time off and the average weather delays. All in moderate growing conditions, so whether it's a really dry year or a really wet year will highly vary that, that rotation. With the additional, addition of these factors under consideration, the average active mowing time per day for calculation purposes is five hours of active cutting. So that's outside of the maintenance and the travel and, and things like that, so. If the service level was to remain the same while incorporating all of the discussed locations, so if we did all of the halls, all of the cemeteries, then, and we wanted to keep the same service level of that four-week rotation, then we would be looking to add additional resources of an additional team of two mowers, two weed whips, one truck, one trailer for a capital upfront cost of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred. And then the staff cost for additional two staff for a season would be approximately sixteen thousand per year. Moving into the existing and potential cutting service costs, so looking at the estimated time and the cost per cut that we have here, the additional cutting costs for all of the hamlets, if we were to do them all, four times per year would be approximately four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars per year. An additional staff time of five point two five hours. The breakdown of the rural halls, oh, sorry, that was just for the hamlet halls. For the rural halls, if we were to add them, including the travel there, because they're not sites that we're currently at, we would be looking at an estimated cutting time of eleven point two five hours, round trip travel time of three point seven five hours. And so for a total of fifteen hours put into our rotational costs, so the total cost per year if we were to do four cuts would be seventeen thousand dollars and seven, seventeen thousand seventeen, sorry, very difficult number to read. Moving into the private cemeteries, we would be looking at the total amount of time, and now this time is already within our existing program, so this time does not add anything to our, our, our rotation time because it's already there. But it, it takes us about nine point six five hours, counting travel time, to do those sites. The total cost per year for the, for, to do those four private cemeteries is ten thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So looking at different service delivery models, a set agreed upon number of cuts per year at a specified amount, i.e., as it exists right now, for the private cemeteries, two hundred dollars per year for four cuts. As described above, with specially requested cuts outside of the regular rotation at an increased cost for the increased travel to site. Option number three would be cutting by request as it fits into the program's schedule and availability without guarantee of reaction time at a specified rate. Example, two hundred dollars per hour plus two dollars per kilometer travel. Options for fee structures could be full subsidization, no fees charged and the county absorbs all of the costs. Full cost recovery, the cost recovery rate as determined annually by administration is applied to the master rates and charged to the halls and cemeteries. Fifty percent cost recovery, again, as determined annually by administration. Single rate for the four cuts, so a thousand dollars per year blanket. And then add-on cuts that could be done at a separate mile, separate rate plus mileage.
On the snow plowing side of things, nothing has really changed since we last presented. Excuse me. The skid steer would be charged out at a hundred and nineteen dollars an hour and three cents. In a one-ton truck, two haul-out skid steer there would be charged out at thirty-two seventy-seven an hour. These would be based, like we said previously, on a as-needed basis, if that's the, where we wanted to go. Obviously, if we were plowing every time we were in those hamlets, that would be an increased cost for those, those halls. Definitely both options that we can look at, whatever direction Council would like to go with that, so. They would be done also after the hamlets are cleared, all our other service deliveries are met, then we would be going back to do these halls, making sure they're done, so.
Moving into the considerations, the number of community centers opting into the service would impact the program costs. As I said, if we would like to keep the service levels where it's at, then we would be looking at additional resources. The community centers do currently already receive a grant for their operational costs. Uptake in the program would depend highly on the rates selected, as most centers are currently done at no cost by the volunteers. A change in service levels or rates would impact the locations currently being done for free or at low costs, i.e. the Huxley Hall and Curling Rink and the private cemeteries. The addition of the hamlet community centers to the cutting program would contribute to the continued care and maintenance of the communities these are a part of. The service can be difficult for volunteer groups to source, especially getting the local individuals with the proper equipment and time. Although from speaking to most of them, they are able to, they have been able to pull that together. Financial impacts, the potential impacts as deal, I've already kind of run through those and it would depend on the options selected. With the existing staff and resources, the addition of the community, of all the rural community centers would extend the rotation to just under five weeks, depending on the vegetation growth. And again, if we were to want to try to keep that down to four weeks, we'd be having to look at additional resources. And as Mike mentioned, snow plowing would vary greatly depending on the amount of snowfall and the frequency that the service was done. Moving into our recommended motion, that Council direct administration to discontinue the mowing service at the Huxley Community Center and Curling Rink in order to, in twenty twenty-six, to allow them for sufficient time to adapt and shift to doing that service themselves. And so we would still do it for this season and then move, move to them doing it themselves next season. And that we increase the private cemetery mowing fees to a thousand dollars annually in twenty twenty-six and that formal service agreements with existing service cemeteries be developed. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you for that. For, I just need a clarification. This whole conversation started as a request. This whole conversation started as a request from Wimborne. Wimborne has withdrawn their request.
Yes.
So, I mean, we've done a lot of investment in this investigation. What if we just said we just leave it as-is, status quo, and, and continue doing what we're doing?
At this time, because we have brought to light the fact that the Huxley Community Center is being mown without any compensation, and that it is a difference in service level between what we're offering Huxley versus what we're offering the other hamlet and rural halls, it would be administrative's, administration's recommendation that we address that either through a rate being applied to that or through discontinuing the service.
Okay. Councilor Phobes, you had a question?
For the snow removal, does the county, it's just a question that I've been asked since they've written, I have someone in the public who read this. So if someone needs to be buried and it's the access to the cemetery, how do they get in? How, how does that work? Just for clarity, please.
Through the chair. Fallon's team will contact us if, if they need our assistance in plowing, but usually, usually they tackle the cemetery side of things, and then we just provide assistance if needed or bigger equipment, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Cunningham?
Thank you, this was a very comprehensive RFD. I had to like try to keep myself focused in it. So just for clarity on my sake, my understanding is currently for the private cemeteries, we're charging $200 per year, and the council option number one would move to charge $1,000 instead of that 200. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Phobes?
And to follow up on Councilor Cunningham's, so when you spoke with them and they told you 600 to 800, did you tell them that it would be $1,000? Because that might be a bit of a sticker shock.
I did bring that up to them. As I have laid out here, all of them are well over $1,000 for the service to actually occur. They were more than willing, the, the ones that I was able to talk to, because I didn't reach, didn't hear anything concrete back from the Lumney Cemetery. But the Lutheran and Catholics were both willing to pay for their services. At this point, if council would want to move that to be a $600 fee or an $800 fee to meet with their expectations, that would be up to council.
Councilor Phobes, yep?
Another question that I got, because they live out on an acreage and they see the graders going by, so they're just curious as to knowing what, how the mowing program works. Like, how many staff do we have? Do we send that staff all out at the same time to the same location? Or are they spread out over, so just looking for an overview of how that program works?
Yeah, so we have, we currently, we have four staff, two trucks, two trailers. They're hired from May to, through August, and they typically run going collectively from site to site. Some of the sites are smaller, and so they will split up, or they'll leapfrog themselves, you know, based on who's sitting on a mower and who's weed whipping and who's able to be done first. But typically, yes, they are traveling together and they hit a rotation around the county. We have some sites we know that the grass grows more at, some that the grass grows less at, and so we try to put them through a rotation based on, on what that growth is and, and what the weather is, because sometimes it'll be raining up in Wimborne, but we'll be fine farther south, so.
Councilor Christie?
The cemeteries to go to $1,000 to me seems pretty heavy. I'd be more comfortable at $500 annually, and the comments I got from the Wimborne Hall is they've looked after their grass control, but they're worried about snow removal on call if they can't handle it themselves. If it was heavy snow, then they need bigger equipment, so they would like to have, like, if they need heavier equipment, like you say, than what they use, then they might go on call for a single application at times. To go from 200 to $1,000 to me is pretty aggressive, and it's somewhat of a community service for me, so with the comments from the cemeteries that I got back at, at 600 to $800, I would be comfortable at 500.
Okay, any further questions, discussion? So if we were to, as Councilor Christie has suggested, provide a optional snow plowing service that would be only available when we're done the other work that needs to be done, and would we then be charging it out at the numbers that were suggested in this RFD? So that's the skid steer at 119 bucks an hour and travel. So it could potentially be like, depending on how long it takes to do it, right? Go ahead, Mr. Conken.
Through the chair, that is correct. We do have the council options there, about a 50% cost recovery, so 75, 90 an hour for the skid steer and 16, 38 for the truck. Once again, those are greatly dependent on snowfall amounts. Wimborne is likely the biggest hall that we would be plowing for their parking lot. I would love to make an estimated guess on how long it would take, but I would be wrong for sure in the first snowfall, so. Yeah, it would greatly depend on, on the amount of snowfall, of how long it would take us there, so.
Okay, so we could set up a program that, where we would do snow removal on request at a fee level per hour, and with the understanding that it would be done after all other snow removal that is normally required is taking place. It would be like private lane plowing, same kind of approach. Okay, and then, one of my concerns around this whole thing with, we're already subsidizing our rural halls, and so if we add an extra service and charge them for it, then we just increase their need to ask for more support potentially from us, right? And so I guess unless we're getting overwhelmed with requests for mowing from them, which it doesn't sound like we are, perhaps we just leave well enough alone and, and not create a service like that. And then, as Councilor Christie and a number of other councillors have suggested, perhaps we need to look at adjusting the fee on the cemeteries to be slightly higher than what has been till now. Deputy Reeve McGee?
When you name these as private cemeteries, is that meaning that they're owned by the church or by individuals?
By the church.
So why would we supplement a private entity of any type? I'm a little bit concerned about that.
Tradition, historical behavior on our part? We've always done it. So while we say we are mowing these private cemeteries, we also mow many other cemeteries.
Yes.
That are ours, but at one time were private.
Yes, yes. Through the chair, yes. We, we mow 13 cemeteries currently that are owned by the county and that, through various periods in time, have either been family or, or owned through a religious entity.
Yep. So we are mowing more than just these four cemeteries. We're mowing 13 in total, and they're scattered throughout the county.
Yes.
And as you said, at one point in time, they either were a community cemetery, or they were, because at Torrington, there's two, right? There's the Torrington West and Torrington East, and we mow both of them, but we charge for one of them.
Torrington is both of, both belong to us.
Okay.
Both the east and the west. The, the, those two cemeteries are county-owned. The Torrington ones that I refer to here is the Zion former church site up on the, it's southeast of Torrington.
Yep, yep, I know where you're talking now.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, question is, what do we want to do? As council, we've got multiple options sitting in front of us. I'm looking for direction. I know the Torrington group are reluctant to have that mowing, or not Torrington, the Huxley group is reluctant to have that mowing go away. Certainly, they don't have the base of volunteers. They would get it done, but it wouldn't be done as it's currently being done, so. And their focus would remain on the Ball Diamond, for sure, so.
Which, we do currently own the Ball Diamond. And there is just that, that $1 a year lease that the community associa, or the Historical Association has with the county, and that was how they were able to build their facility there.
Yeah, so they focus on mowing the internal part of the Ball Diamond, and we mow around the outside?
Yes.
Councilor Cunningham?
So I'm with Councilor Christie on this. I think currently of $200, I mean, everybody, all of us, and even our taxpayers, two, what's the two, they say the two constants in life, death and taxes, so we all experience that. So I think to go from 200 even to 400, I mean, that's doubling it. I mean, 1991 was a few years ago, but I think to go from 200 to 1,000 is just, is way too much. So that would be, somewhere in that neighborhood would be my recommendation for that. I think everybody's experiencing tax increases every time they turn around, so I think it's the least we can do for our cemeteries is try to keep it as reasonable as possible.
Go ahead, you can start.
I would make the motion to increase the private cemetery mowing to $500 annually, thank you, for 2020, annually in 2026, and leave, I don't know how to word this part, I might need some help, and leave the rest of the services at status quo unless you get inquiries.
Okay, so.
Any help wording that, please?
So do we want to split, Mr. Hogan, maybe? Let's deal with the cemetery one, and then you'd make a motion then to just leave the other services at status quo, and then we probably would be looking for a motion to consider some kind of private snow plowing arrangement, so potentially three motions here.
Okay. Let me start with that first one.
That's a good start. No, appreciate that.
I'll start with the increasing the private cemetery mowing to $500 annually, starting in 2026.
Yep, to allow them time and implement formal service agreements. Okay, all right. Any discussion to Councilor Phobes' motion regarding private cemetery mowing fee increase beginning in 2026? I'm not seeing any. Are we ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion is carried. All right. So, Councilor Phobes, do you want to do your? Let me ask a question first of administration. So, Mr. Hogan, if we were not going to change any of the other mowing, would we need to make a motion to that effect?
Through the chair, technically you don't. Having a motion on the table, though, does reaffirm the action that you took.
Okay.
So it can be council's choice. So if you are looking, if there's no motion made, then the status quo is just naturally going to continue.
Continue, yeah.
If, if you do want to make a motion, then it would reinforce that the status quo is council's desire. So it's really up to you as to which approach, but both will lead to the same outcome.
Or we could just say that we just maintain the status quo regarding mowing services, period. Okay. So this is now going to be another motion. So I guess the, I'd be looking for direction from council. Do you want to, do we want to make a motion and put it on the books, or do we want to just leave it and go ahead and make a motion regarding potential plowing? Go ahead, Councilor Phobes?
Well, I would make the motion because it's been such a long time since this was looked at, that at least then it looks like we've addressed it in one way or another. So I would make the motion that council maintain the status quo regarding mowing services for rural community centers.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Now, the other issue that has been raised has been the snow plowing at rural community centers. So we would need a motion to that effect. And basically, we'd be looking for, are we looking for a cost recovery, I guess? And as, as we are, as we have time, as we are available.
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. So we provide snow plowing services to rural community centers as, as requested at a cost recovery basis and as time allows. That's basically the gist of what we're trying to get at.
Exactly right.
Mr. Hogan first, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Zier. So go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Through, through Mr. Chair, I think we'll, we recommend the motion that council provides snow plowing services as requested, or maybe we'll put to, sorry, the council provides snow plowing services to rural community centers as requested on a cost recovery basis. One of the things that we will point out is the, the numbers that are in the, in the RFD are estimates, so the, as we go forward with that, we'll refine those numbers, we'll take another look at them and ensure. So at the end of the day, you might not see the exact numbers that you've seen in here today, that's the, the estimate, but we will, on a cost recovery basis, we'll determine those and then figure out the course of action, because coming from this, there's likely a couple of steps that you'll see in the, in the future, whether that's through the master rates bylaw, whether that's the snow clearing policy, those types of things. So administration will go back and figure out where, within the county's frame, document framework that those, those things fit in. But until that happens, there will be this motion, assuming its passage, there will be this motion on the books that says this is a thing we do and at, at this rate.
So basically, the way I see it right now is we'd be talking about maybe 70 bucks travel time back and forth, and we'd be talking X number of hours of actual plowing. Mr. Zier, you had a comment?
Thank you. Through, just to add to what Mr. Hogan said there, yes, we will be coming back with a, a request for addition to the master rates bylaw. Typically, this is based on a percentage of road builders' rates, so that'll be the recommendation that comes back to council.
Okay. All right. So currently, we're just saying we're going to provide, that council, council's actually going to go out and do this snow plowing. We get to operate a piece of equipment. Do we need training for that? Mr. Gannon, why are you nodding so vigorously? I, I actually liked the first wording. Okay. That council approved the provision of snow plowing services to rural community centers upon request, as requested, at a cost recovery basis. Okay? Mr. Councilor Christie?
I would make the motion to approve the provision of snow plowing
I would make the motion to approve the provision for, of snowplowing services to rural community centers as requested at a cost recovery basis, and I really wanted to drive a Grader with no steering wheel.
See? You'd be amazed how many counselors want to get in a piece of equipment. And cause some harm somewhere, right? All right, is there any further discussion to that motion? We already know we're not going to be approved by administration to operate equipment.
It tried.
But it was worth a shot. Any further conversation or discussion regarding the motion? If not, I'm going to ask the question. Okay, I'm not seeing any. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. So thank you, Ms. Sherlock and Mr. Conken, appreciate your help this morning and all the work that you've done on our behalf, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate the time you put into this, so thank you very much.
Okay, um, I'm going to suggest we take a 10-minute break, so we are in recess to 9:35. We are in recess.
Okay, it is nine thirty-five and I will call today's meeting back to order as promised. And we are moving on in our agenda to five point three point one, which is the Fire Guardian Annual Appointments for two thousand and twenty-five. And welcome, Ms. Grossneild. Glad to have you here today. And Deborah, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. So today I bring it to you, the annual appointment of our fire guardians. Some relevant legislation there is the FPPA. Section four requires that each council appoints of an M.D. Appoints for not exceeding one year. Fire guardians to act on the behalf of, to enforce the act within the boundaries of the M.D. The FPPA also states that elected officials are fire guardians and just by virtue of the office. However, we don't recommend that just because you don't have access to any administrative tools in order to be fire guardians. So we also have a bylaw, seventeen seventy is our fire protection bylaw. And fire guardian and permitting details are in that bylaw in a little bit more detail. We also, just with some recent burns and some, some, yes, maybe some issues that have been brought forward, some by some recent burns, we've actually reviewed and adopted a standard operating procedure to kind of clarify some fire guardian roles and some expectations. As well as we've changed some of our fire permitting procedures as well in order to support the teams that are doing the work out there. So some background, these appointments have been recommended by each fire department to the CIO as the, as the bylaw. And administrative staff can still issue those fire permits should a volunteer fire department not be available. Because this is a deemed administration function, councils are not set up. And should any appointed fire guardians leave their respective departments, they, or position at Neheal County, the appointment is revoked immediately. So fire permits are issued by fire guardians throughout the year to maintain control of burning throughout the county. Fire guardians are in all districts processed about, they process about seven hundred per year. And this is kind of, that's the average over many years. So those also include some of those burns such as our own transfer, our burn perths at our own transfer sites, I guess, landfills. The advantage of having all districts permitting allows some administrative weight to be balanced. And it also allows each district to know which, any fires that are in that district. It also gives approval to dispatch. So when they get dispatched out to a call, they know that there's a controlled burn in that area. And so they don't immediately have to, like, they have a little bit more aware, aware, awareness of that. So fire guardians are appointed through each council. And we do not offer compensation to those fire guardians directly. They can be compensated through their own municipality, though. Our customer service has helped many ratepayers with the online system. And then I.T. and records management also maintain user accounts in order to do that procedure. And then our rural fire chief has taken on the Acme area fire permitting administrative duties. And then we also have myself as the backup and community peace officers. And so this is, I mean, we always have that for all fire permits. But Acme area fire department did not put forward any fire guardians this year. So the recommended motion is there with all of the names attached to that. And council options are to approve the recommended motion or to amend the motion as presented.
So I just have one little question. And we don't necessarily restrict the number of fire guardians in a department at all. It's just up to their discretion who they want to appoint. So I just noticed that Carbon had a multiple number of individuals, whereas most did not.
Yeah, and through the chair, it's just basically what their capacity is. And so we, we allow them to, if it takes five to process those, then that's their capacity and their choice.
Okay. Counselor Whitstock.
Thank you. Mr. Reeve, I have a question about, okay, so when you get into the, the fire permit and click which department, in the Acme area, you would click Acme area, and you guys take that over?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to know in case I decide to have a fire across the road from my house.
Counselor Forbes, you had a question?
I did. Just in the off chance, I mean, not all three of you are going to be out of commission, but if you were, could the Linden Fire Department's guardian pick up that slack on the off chance not one of the three of you is available?
Sorry, just for the Acme area?
Yeah, because you're taking on the, as a fire guardians. But say all three of you, I don't know, something happens, you're all busy. Would the Linden Fire Department be, consider helping?
So yes, I mean, they absolutely could because they're set up as user accounts. So we could reassign those permits to them. But that is also why we've actually added the community peace officers as well to help with that administrative duty, just in case it's needed as a backup.
Thank you for that answer.
Okay, so, what's the wish? We need to appoint some fire guardians. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd love to make that motion. It's one of my favorite things that we do annually. I'd like to have that council point the following as fire guardians for the issuance of fire permits to March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. I will name the names just because I have high regard for these people who have been able to step up. Chris Evans, Marie Fenton, Brendan Remple, Jody Cransler, Jordan Reed, Jeremy Cransler, Austin Lauren Larson, Travis Cormier, Riddle Weeb, Sean Clausen, Carson Reamer, Max Penner, Doug Freitz, Jason Mettleson, Derek Benedict, Richard Hoppins, Alan Adam, Chris Armstrong, and as the rest listed.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint the fire guardians for the issuance of fire permits to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, and by community as listed in the motion. Is any further discussion to that motion? Not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. And again, thank you, Ms. Grossfield, for your work. And appreciate you showing up here every year to do this, so thank you very much. Okay, the next item in our agenda would be five, no, it's not, it's six point one, which is Ratepayer Evenings for two thousand and twenty-five. And welcome, Ms. Anderson and Christine, whenever you're ready, please.
Thank you, Council. So it's that time of year, again, we get to pick our locations for our annual ratepayer evenings. So just a little background, these events provide a family-friendly opportunity for residents and ratepayers to come and engage with council and staff, ask questions, and provide feedback. The facilitation each year is like a trade fair, so each department has its own booth with their specific information. We provide a catered supper, kids' activities, and prize straws as well. And we started this a few years ago, but we do a ratepayer night feedback survey that will help gauge the event's success and determine potential improvements. So these events have been held in different locations throughout the county since they began in two thousand and nineteen. We started in Toshu and Acme, moved to Torrington and Carbon after a few COVID years, then Swalwell and Wimbourn, and last year was Three Hills and Sunny Slope. So some new locations options for two thousand and twenty-five would be the Huxley Hall and Curling Rink, and the Drumheller Badlands Community Facility, just knowing council's preference to kind of split up the county. If you do wish, we can repeat previous locations. And we're recommending holding these events in June of two thousand and twenty-five, as we did last year. Fifteen thousand is budgeted for these events as well, and that includes catering, rental, door prizes, printing, and branded items to give away. So the recommended motion is that council approves hosting ratepayer evenings in wherever you choose.
Well, that's simple.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that. Is there any questions or discussion regarding holding the two thousand and twenty-five ratepayer evenings? I think we're all supportive of that. And the question would probably be more than anything, location, 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 so. Counselor Cunningham, please.
So I'm just curious, the ratepayer night feedback survey, without going through each one of them, like, could you give us just a little bit of an indication of what you heard from the folks that attended? Just so we know if we're going in the right direction or doing what our people are kind of wish, wanting and?
Yeah, absolutely. Through the chair, in two thousand and twenty-three, we had sixty-seven percent of the people that showed up and then filled out the survey were very satisfied. And then last year, there was sixty percent very satisfied, so.
Counselor Cunningham.
So in that survey, did they give you any indication of, of what they felt we could do differently or what we could do to improve, or is that just kind of, there's not much comment?
Through the chair, there wasn't many suggestions for improvement. There was kind of just like a place to leave comments, and most just appreciated the, the meal, so that was good.
Thanks for feeding me. Counselor Forbes.
So just remind me again, how many people in two thousand and twenty-four came to our ratepayer evening?
Through the chair, so last year, we had a hundred and ninety-eight. There was a hundred and eight in Three Hills, and then doing the math, was that ninety? Sorry, in Sunny Slope.
No pressure.
That's not my forte. She's right there. Right?
You look at Marika, say, help!
Sorry, can I, and I guess the reason why I'm asking this question is just because I did get a phone call last night about the Drumheller Band, Badlands Community Facility. Do we not have something in our actual county close to that area that we could use as a facility?
Yeah, through the chair, I wasn't sure of anything that, with the required capacity and the kitchen as well that we, we need. I'm definitely open to suggestions if you know of anything, but.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
I believe for our end of that, of our county, that is no different than suggesting Three Hills Community Center. It is its own area, but it services our, our residents the same as Three Hills services our residents. So my thought, though, and Counselor Penner brought this forward to me as well, suggested, is it feasible maybe to instead have a tent at the Horseshoe Canyon? And we could do a very different style of catering possibly, but it certainly can be done. You know, like Counselor Penner said, she's done two weddings that way, so she knows it can be done.
Yeah, through the chair, that is definitely something we can consider. The only issue there with having it outside is weather dependent. If it's really windy and we've got those big display boards, you know, there just could be some things logistically that might prove a challenge.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
We're suggesting a tent.
Right, right.
Because it works well for the long table.
That's true.
It would also be a great way to highlight part of what makes us great.
Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you, Deputy McGee, you just took the words right out of my mouth. So, yeah, I, my brain initially went to Horseshoe Canyon right as well. I know it's a little bit, we have to get a little bit more creative, but, you know, we talk about the promotion of Horseshoe Canyon, not only for visitors, but also for the economic development potential. So I just think if, if we can have an event there and get people out there, you know, people maybe that have never been out there. So I know it's a little bit different, like, maybe instead of, you know, doing a hot meal, we could do, you know, we could do sandwiches or, you know, pivot a little bit. Or, I mean, I know I've had a wedding at my place, too, where they cook somewhere else and then bring the, you know, bring the food to the site, so. But I would be a hundred percent in favor of having it at the canyon and just, and maybe we don't have the display boards, maybe we just pivot a little bit and do things a little bit differently for that one. I don't think it would hurt to change things up a little bit, but I think it's just a great opportunity to highlight the canyon.
Okay, so we have some idea what costs would be for tent rental based on what we used to do for the long table dinner. It might potentially increase the cost of the event. Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Chair, that was going to be my, my point, is that having this at Horseshoe Canyon, we can explore doing that. There would be a tent, likely bathroom rentals, that sort of thing. So the, the rental costs versus any established hall are going to be higher. So the budget that's included, or the dollars that are included in budget two thousand and twenty-five, those would likely be exceeded. We could accommodate that, I believe. But again, you would see that, you would see that price tag most likely go up.
So in the past, we've approved the events, like having two, and we've kind of left the location open, because at some points, we've had questions about whether a hall had the capability to handle what we were bringing. Could we approve doing the two events with the location in the Drumheller area to be determined based on, and maybe we could get some information back on what that might change in terms of costing, to have a tent, have the bathroom rentals, and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely look into that and bring some information back. That's council's wish.
Counselor Christie, then I'll come to you, Counselor Forbes.
Just a comment that I kind of like the Badland, or the Horseshoe Canyon area, because we're trying to figure out what we need to build there, and it would give us a chance to talk to the local community to say, what do you want and what do we need? And it would give them a place to, to voice their opinion, I think.
Okay, Counselor Forbes, yeah, okay. I mean, that's a choice of council, right? Like, it's, if, I guess if we give direction, then we have to realize that there's a cost associated with that. Are you an outdoors person by any chance, Ms. Anderson? Do you like camping?
Outdoors and a tent, sure.
Outdoors with a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar RV? That's the outdoors person I am?
Me, too. I like walking.
So I guess direction, we're looking for direction to give to administration. It would mean certainly a little more work to pull the event together and to make it happen. And it would add to the cost, so. I am looking for direction. Counselor Cunningham.
I know it's hard to answer, but would we have an idea of what that additional cost would be? Like, does anybody remember the cost of the tent and the bathroom rentals?
Mr. Hogan.
Through the chair, not, not at our fingertips right now, because some of it would also depend on, depending on where at Horseshoe Canyon do this, there might be some land prep costs associated to that. Like, as an example, in years past, for the long table dinner, there was a trail built. It doesn't mean that that same location isn't the one we'd necessarily have to use for this, so there's a number of other things that would have to be figured out.
I assume we probably not necessarily need the scenic as much as we do for the long table, and it could be possible to put it up in the area where we've run the markets previous, which also puts it closer to parking, so.
There are, there are other factors there that we need to take a look at in terms of the hours of the canyon. I'm assuming that if there was any overlap between this and the paid parking program, that we would waive the paid parking. There's other considerations like that we'd have to look at, just to assess whether there'd be any impacts, but unless, unless we're, want to charge everybody two bucks for coming to the ratepayer evening, but.
But we fed him supper. Okay. So again, I'm still looking for direction. We recognize that certainly the Horseshoe Canyon option is going to be more effort and more cost if we go in that direction, so. Probably means a certain amount of adjustment in what we're doing. But it's, we give direction and. Counselor Forbes.
I'd make the motion to approve hosting a ratepayer evening in Huxley and the second ratepayer evening to take place at Horseshoe Canyon in two thousand and twenty-five, with the knowledge that there are extra costs that may be associated.
So I guess the question I would ask council is, if it turns out that there are just too many complications, we, we'd be open to an alternate location?
And move them down the hill, I guess, to Drumheller.
Okay. I think that just, not to say that we wouldn't make every effort to make the Horseshoe Canyon thing work, but if there was something that happened, we recognize, it's just like if, if something was to happen at the Huxley Hall, we would have to find an alternative location.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion with regard to the motion? And the motion currently reads, "The council approved hosting a ratepayer evening in Huxley and the second ratepayer evening to take place at Horseshoe Canyon in two thousand and twenty-five, with the knowledge that there may be extra costs incurred." Okay? Any further discussion? Mr. Hogan, please.
Through Mr. Chair, so as we go through with, with the motion, administration will endeavor to, to look at Horseshoe Canyon and set that up. If there's a concern, we'd bring that back to you, but if not, then you wouldn't see anything come back, we would.
Okay. All right. We're good? Okay, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that looks like it's carried unanimously. So congratulations, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, thank you.
Have fun pitching a tent.
Thank you.
She's, you're not sure now whether you want to ask us this question or not?
No, all good.
No, we'll look forward to it, and the events in the past have been well done, and we assume this will be the same, so, thank you.
We'll try our best, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on then. The next item on our agenda is six point two, which is the two thousand and twenty-four Fourth Quarter Variance Report. And welcome, Ms. Von Mirbach. And Marika, whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Good morning, Reeve and members of council. So today, I'm here to bring you the Fourth Quarter Variance Report. Council receives quarterly financial reports during the year. These reports are intended to inform council of financial transactions to date and how expenditures, revenues, and other financial indicators compare to the annual operating budget. The purpose of this report is to report on the two thousand and twenty-four operating budget performance, to look at how operating projects and capital projects did within the year, which projects were completed, what the status was, what look, what we're looking to do and continue to do in two thousand and twenty-five, and also provide some other supplementary information on key financial indicators. And this report also includes some recommendations to do with the surplus in the year and how those can be contributed to reserves. So there are a variety of appendix items that are included within this report, and I will speak to each of them throughout the duration of this presentation. The first one is the operating budget summary by function. So this classifies all of the expenditures and revenues that were included within the budget by functional category, as summarized, like, including all the departments. The total net forecasted surplus is two, and this, again, this is unaudited numbers, so we are fairly close to where we were looking at in terms of audited financial statements, but these numbers are not a perfect reflection of exactly how they might be presented in the financial statements. There's two reasons for that. One, there are sometimes adjustments that are determined during the process of the financial audit that are changed some numbers by a little bit, nothing ever substantial. And two, the fact that the financial statements are presented on a slightly different basis than that we are more, slightly more cash basis with some accruals done within these, these, this report, whereas the financial statements are a little bit more strict on exactly how things are reported. So we are anticipating a surplus of two million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The vast majority of this relates to two sources of revenue that weren't included in the budget. We anticipated that we'd have those revenue sources and they'd get put back into reserves, but when we did the budget process, we didn't include those as revenues in the budget and, because we knew that they aren't necessarily continually sustaining revenue sources. So the first is two million, two point nine million dollars of favorable variance related to investment returns. And offsetting this, there's that one point seven million that during the Q-two report, we actually already contributed to reserves. And then there's nine hundred thousand, which relates to the receipt of funds from selling capital equipment. And again, four hundred and thirty-three thousand of this went into reserves at Q-two, but there still remains an excess amount of that that came in in the second half of the year. So if you actually take out those two surpluses related to those revenues that, again, were planned for, we knew they'd come, we knew they were going to end up being a contribution to reserves and fund long-term sustainability of the organization, the net variance or net surplus in the budget is one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. And this represents a three point nine percent overall variance from the budget. Again, we've talked before, especially when we're developing budget and when we're doing those reportings, that's kind of getting into that, it's the low end of that optimal range of variances in terms of looking at the operating budget and being comfortable with where we've budgeted and where we've come to at the end of the year in terms of finances and ensuring that we don't end up in a deficit in any given year.
So just before you go past that, that's three point nine percent?
Yes.
What is a comfort level?
Kind of that, like, four to six percent is sort of that comfort level. So, yeah, we're kind of on that bottom end of where we're comfortable, but it also indicates that we're, we're in a good range of being able to project what we're going to see within any given year and where we're going to land at any given year. It's really, when you're kind of at those percentages, it's a good reflection of the budget process being fairly accurate in terms of how things are going to flow in a year and where we're going to land. You get any less than that four percent, and you're cutting it really, really close. And anything over that six percent, and you might have things that you need to refine in the future in order to actually, to make sure that you're a little bit closer. So those are metrics we're kind of constantly aware of as administration and looking at how we're, and, and even on each line item and, and within departments, we're looking at it at an even more refined level of where are those comfort levels? Where might there be something that can be cut? Where are we too close? Where are we, you know, struggling to meet those budget levels? But when you aggregate it all and have that three point nine percent, that's really actually a fairly healthy indicator of budget versus actuals.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. So with that, that's kind of just your really, really high-level summary of the bottom line, but I'm going to go into detail in terms of each individual functional area and how that compared to our budget. So revenues had a four point two million dollar favorable variance. Again, the vast majority of that is related to investment returns, but there's also several other smaller variances built into that. The first is nine licenses, licenses, licenses and permits, which had a ninety-three hundred dollar favorable variance, which related to planning and development permits. There was a twenty-three, twenty-six dollar favorable variance related to LGGF grant funding. I include, I don't typically include ones when they're that small. I include, I don't typically include ones when they're that small, but that was the only one that I wouldn't explain otherwise. And so I just included every single line item in this report. I typically skip the really small ones, but. At year end, it's kind of that one where I try and make sure that like all of those things are really detailed so that that explanation is there. Sometimes when there's smaller variances throughout the year, I'll kind of round it out with all other expenditures or revenues or within, in line with expectations, but at year end, I try and put something to everything.
So did we send a note of thanks to the province acknowledging this favorable?
Then other revenue had a 94,000 favorable variance. This primarily consisted of oil field water licensing revenues. Sales of goods and services had 113,000 favorable variance. This included 71,000 favorable from the dust control program, 24,000 favorable related to oil field inspection fees and 18,000 favorable, which related to a bunch of small variances, including water distribution, campgrounds, paid parking, cemeteries, scrap metal sales, tax notification fees and map sales. Sales to other governments had 1,000 favorable variance, which included an 18,000 favorable variance with respect to waste transfer site agreements, and then a 17,000 unfavorable variance related to protective services and water management contracts. Rental income again had one of a really, really small variance and just related to updated rental agreements. Penalties and fines had a 14,000 favorable variance. This is primarily related to penalties on property taxes. At Q3, this one was projected to be slightly like, not as high of a favorable balance. There were just slightly more outstanding taxes at November 1st when we had to incur those last round of penalties for the year than we anticipated when we reported at Q3. Property taxes had a 3,000 favorable variance and again, those are just related to assessment adjustments within the year. Special taxes in frontage has a 43,000 favorable variance. The most of this related to water riser fees that are received and we don't include those water riser fees in the approved budget because they're very unpredictable. And so each year at Q4, anything that was generated by those fees is just contributed back to the water reserve and that's reflected in motion one of this report. Return on investments has that 2.9 million dollar favorable variance. It aligns with the preliminary reserve schedule present, strategy presented in the council of October 2023. So this is where we're trying to transition those investment returns from being a part of the operating budget to really being a funding mechanism for reserves. And this was kind of done in reflection when we had really quickly dropping in, in interest rates and then we went to do budget the next year. There was that struggle of matching that where we were, knew we were going to get less investment returns because the rate had dropped unexpectedly. So by moving it into those investment, into the reserve funding strategy, it just alleviates any of those fluctuations from affecting the actual core operating budget when council reviews it and looks at it every year. So again, part of that favorable variance for investment returns was contributed to reserves during the Q2 report, but motion number one recommends moving the rest of those, that excess revenue into reserves as well. And I'll go through everything that's included in that motion. One has a schedule and an appendix at the end that details exactly where those fluctuation, where those movements are happening. Transfer from reserves has 152,000 favorable variance. This actually represents more money pulled out of reserves that was originally budgeted for, but has only been done by council motion, the first of which is 100,000 dollar draw related to the ACME Alumni Association. Then there's the 52,000 dollar reserve draw that was approved to fund Troschu fire truck repairs that were incurred and weren't originally included in the budget. Then there's the 902,000 favorable variance related to capital equipment plan sales. Again, this is one where we put the excess funds at Q2 away, but there's still some excess ones that'll get contributed to reserves through motion one. That summarizes the revenues by category.
Yeah, Counselor Phobos, you have a question?
I have more than one. The capital equipment, how many pieces of equipment? I've been asked this question. How many pieces of equipment were, were sold to achieve the over 900,000 dollars?
Through the chair, I do not have that number on top of my head.
You can find it for me.
They absolutely can.
Mr. Hogan or Mr. Zier?
Through the chair, that's, that's a, that's a piece of information we would have to go back and put together.
Okay, that's fine. My second question is around the insurance proceeds from the plow truck replacement, the 111,000 dollars. Did that include everything that we put into the truck as well before it went out on the road, decals, those type of things?
Through the chair, that's just the amount the insurance company provided us when that truck was written off.
So the actual replacement was much higher than what our insurance settlement was?
Yes.
Yeah, so we didn't get a new truck for that amount of money?
That's what I, the question was asked of me.
Okay. Yeah, and so we would have somewhere with the actual costs of that piece of equipment. I think we had a conversation around it at some point in time.
Right.
Mr. Zier.
That's correct, thank you. The request for that with the pricing did come for council at the September of last year, give or take. So I can find that RFD if you like and the actual cost on it.
I just got presented with the question and I said I would ask, so. My next question is around the 94,000 in oil field water licensing revenues. I've been asked, is this something that we can expect to be consistent in the future? And where does this money go in the reserve aspect? Is it going into water? Where does the reserves go for that?
Through the chair, we have seen higher than budgeted revenues related to water access agreements in the last few years. I believe in the, I believe it was the 2024 budget, we did increase that revenue expectation based on trending, but it's not something that we actually are confident we're going to receive on any given year. And so rather than increase that budget and then not meet those revenues when those trends don't continue, yeah, so it's part of, it's not necessarily defined as a specific contribution to reserves with that revenue, but it is a part of that appendix G and some of the recommendations, like the bottom end recommendations that of going into reserves.
So the question is where does that money end up? Like the money that comes in on the water sales, is it ending up in a reserve or is it going into revenue and then expended?
Through the chair, it ends up being part of the overall surplus that we put back into reserves.
All right. Mr. Zier, go ahead. No, please.
Just for clarification on that, so it's called water access fee. So basically we are not selling the water, we're not permitted, we're not the actual owner of that water. What we are doing is permitting access to our site for the companies to, to access that water. What Ms. Von Mirbach here is mentioning is that we don't typically, we don't, we don't have a typical trend on, on what we see year to year on these. It haven't increased the last couple of years. To date, I haven't received a request this year for anymore. So we know that it varies significantly throughout, throughout the years and that's why we try and trend low, just like we do with our capital equipment disposals. We want to make sure we don't overestimate what our revenues would be coming in on that.
I think we're, we're good to go on.
Through the chair, I do have the number of capital equipments that were sold. There were 17 units that were sold during the year. Included in that is that snowplow proceeds and as well as the amount that was sold when we finished purchasing the Three Hills pumper. When Three Hills contributed, there are 30% of that, so that's also included in that surplus in that line item.
Thank you. That's very quick, thank you.
I got good people behind me.
Yeah.
I got a Teams message, I was like, yes.
People are listening in.
Okay, so that summarizes revenues and then I'll move on to expenditures by function. So there's a 1.4 million dollar unfavorable variance forecasted to year end. The majority of this unfavorable revenue variance in expenditures relates to those additional contributions to reserves that were made during Q2, so it's a little bit, it's not actually unfavorable, the vast majority of that. So in contract good, contracted goods and services, there's a 395,000 favorable variance and this has several contributing factors. There's 85,000 dollars related to advertising and PR, which includes costs related to exploring E-Hill economic development, having brought in some different programming, so some of that wasn't utilized, and some videos and things that weren't actually achieved during the year that resulted in those cost savings. There's 78,000 dollars favorable related to training conferences and memberships, 50,000 related to major maintenance, 47,000 related to professional contracted services, 42,000 related to public land mowing, 38,000 related to contracted building maintenance, 22 favorable for IT contracts, 15,000 for land care programming, 15,000 for fire department supplies, 12,000 related to waste collection, 11,000 related to equipment rentals, 10,000 related to grounds maintenance, 10,000 favorable for insurance. And then there's 24,000 dollars favorable related to small variances. So these are little like 500 here, 1,000 here that aggregate to that. Then there's 55,000 dollars unfavorable in contracted equipment and maintenance repairs and 9,000 unfavorable related to urban garbage site expenses. Then within materials, goods and supplies, there's a 469,000 favorable variance. And again, it has several contributing factors. There's 210,000, which relates to steel supplies. This is one where this actually primarily relates to supplies that were purchased during the years, year, but were still held in inventory at year end, so that reduced the expenditure recorded in 2024. There's 88,000 dollars favorable in shop supplies, 86,000 dollars favorable for fuel, 52,000 dollars favorable for weed control chemicals, 48,000 for road maintenance supplies, 30,000 for utilities, 20,000 for dust control materials, and then 33,000 dollars favorable related to small variances across departments. And then there's also 63,000 dollars unfavorable for water for resale and 35,000 dollars unfavorable related to utility department supplies. Salaries and wages has 105,000 unfavorable variance. This reflects the implementation of the 50th percentile market adjustment as well as expenditures related to employee turnover. And there's provision for allowances has a 27,000 favorable variance. This represents uncollectible taxes written off during the year. Purchases from other governments is a very small favorable variance, but includes one large and one large, one large favorable and one large unfavorable variance. So there's 39,000 favorable related to the policing payment paid to the province and 38,000 unfavorable related to the Drumheller Waste Commission payment. Transfers to other governments has a 34,000 favorable variance, which relates to contingency funding that wasn't utilized during the year. Transfers to individuals and organizations has a 94,000 unfavorable variance. This includes 71,000 unfavorable related to fire department transfers. This includes the 52,000 dollars related to the repairs on the Troschu fire truck, which were done through a draw from reserves. And then there's 23,000 unfavorable related to grant programs. Again, this includes that 100,000 dollar payment to ACME, so the actual net core grant programs had a 77,000 favorable variance. Transfers to local boards and agencies had a 2,000 unfavorable variance, which relates to payments to FCSS and the Marigold Library System. Contributions to reserves has, this is where that 2.2 million dollar unfavorable variance, but really this is actually more money that we've put into reserves than we anticipated during the budget process. So that includes the 1.7 million related to investment income, the 433,000 related to capital equipment plan sales, the 111,000 dollars related to insurance proceeds on the plow truck and 6,000 related to transfers to the municipal reserve related to the planning department. Finally, within expenditures, we have the gravel inventory projects crushing costs, which is, has a 34,000 favorable variance.
Counselor Cunningham, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify this just because I know I'll probably get a question afterwards. So under the salaries and wages, the 105, 845 unfavorable, if I'm understanding it correctly, we have a human resource policy, I think it's 19.0, that we target to position the organization at 50th percentile of the market. So that, there was a, a number in 2024 that was unbudgeted and then we passed that in September of 2024 for that increase. Am I correct on that? Okay. And then just with the employee turnover, is those expenses, is that related to like then the advertising for new employees or where does the expenditures come from that?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, there's, there's a number of areas that that can come from. If there's, if there's willingness on council to, to talk about that more, that's probably better for a closed session discussion.
I'm not seeing any requests to do anything different than what we have currently, so I guess you, are there other questions to this point? Counselor Phobos, I kind of thought maybe you had something there.
It has to do with the, my brain just went blank. The county residents pay for, in front of their houses, dust control.
Dust control.
My brain was not thinking, I'm in eight million places right now. On dust control, so we have, we've brought in, I believe it's 171,000, is that right? What did it cost to implement that? Like have we broken even on our dust control is what I'm asking?
Okay, Mr. Zier, do you want to handle that one? Please.
Sure. So through the chair, every, every year we determine what the previous year's dust control cost would be based on the amount of participation we have, the cost of our materials, both external as well as our internal labor and gravel and that sort of thing. So every year, and actually I have it proposed come in April here for this year's rate, we, we do a projection of what we assume the 2020, the next year's budget will be. So, so with this one, we typically go lower on our participation, much like a lot of other things there, because again, we don't know what our annual rate will be. It does vary quite a bit. Thousands of meters every year it changes. So we do an, an average on that with a little bit lower. The revenue that you see here, the, the, in our revenue, we brought in more because we assumed less on that. And then if you look at the expenses, we actually still brought in a little bit more than we assumed on our cost would be on that. If you want a, a deeper explanation, like I mentioned, the April meeting will have the dust control rates with a little justification as to what that difference is between what our true costs are and then the additional labor, materials, county costs, I'll call it on that. Did you need more clarification than that, Counselor Phobos, or is that?
So just for clarification, currently we are charging for the dust control material and some labor to apply in our costing, or is that?
Yes, a fair amount of it is both county gravel, county labor, county equipment, because we do utilize a lot of our equipment. Really the material cost is what you see in the expenses here. Everything else is wrapped into our gravel inventories, into our operations, salaries, our maintenance, all those sort of things are blended into the, the difference that you see between our expenses and our revenues on these line items.
So basically when we're calculating our costs, we are, we're not necessarily getting 100% cost recovery, but we are, for the materials that we're putting out, we are getting that back.
And, and so through the chair, we, we do have the projections on what costs recover. We determine on, on, again, we go back to a bit of our, our asset management and having the, the true data there and making sure we know, I mean, it is a little difficult to know exactly what the, the gravel costs are per section of row, but we averaged a lot of these things out here. We do know the exact cost of the materials, both in the spec crew, the calcium and the distributor truck that we contract in, and that's the entire costs in the expenses here. The revenues are significantly higher, like I mentioned, and that is because the difference in those two is what the, the additional costs would be that are contributed into that final per meter rate for the additional gravel, equipment and labor, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cunningham, please.
So just in that 55,000 unfavorable in contracted equipment and maintenance repairs, I'm just wondering if that's two separate entities? Like is it contracted equipment that needed maintenance repairs or is that two separate things? Was that maintenance piece, the, the Troschu fire department that we had, or is that maintenance on contracted equipment, if that makes sense?
So that's, that would be maintenance on like all, all contracted maintenance for all streams of county operations. So it's not just one small thing. So it's anything that had contracted maintenance throughout the year, that was a variance, but that wasn't related to the Troschu fire truck, because that's on a separate line item that's within a different functional category.
The Troschu fire truck repairs were under transfers to individuals or other organizations, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. All right. I'm not seeing any other questions at this point, so if you don't mind, you can continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. So that summarizes all of Appendix A. Appendix B looks at variances by actual department. I have historically gone through this. Does council wish me to speak to Appendix B in detail? A lot of it is kind of repeating what comes in Appendix A, so just, I'm happy to.
Is there a need to go through that, or we've covered it to this point? I think we probably could. I'm not seeing any requests for you to go through that, so go ahead.
Absolutely.
Move on to the next one.
So there is explanations for the major variances for all departments included within the report, but that is not necessary to go through at this time. I will go on to Appendix C. So Appendix C speaks to all of the operating projects that were included within the budget during 2024. Again, council will recall at one point, these operating projects were reflected both on the, like Appendix A and Appendix B and in Appendix C. And during this year, we stopped doing that just to be a little bit cleaner in terms of, they were basically being reported on twice rather than once. So these are all reserve-funded. They don't actually impact the core operating budget because of the way that we fund these projects. In 2024, we undertook seventeen operating projects, and Appendix C details the project, the budget, the funding source, the costs incurred to 2020, the end of 2024, the variance, year-end status, carryforward amount if it's applicable, when we started it, when we ended it, and any comments that were necessary on each individual project. Of those seventeen operating projects, eight were completed during the year. Two were completed slightly over budget, and motion two requests additional funding to be drawn from the contingency reserve to fund that difference. One was canceled as the project was actually completed with internal staffing resources rather than going to an external resource. Six are being requested to be carried forward with the existing budget remaining done. And then two are being requested to be carried forward with additional funding allocated to support ongoing initiatives. Those two are the corporate initiatives and the strategic initiative project. For the last several years, we've continued to bump those project budgets up to their original amounts to allow for those amounts to be expended again in the next year and continue those initiatives. And as you'll see in Appendix G, that we actually contribute a portion of the surplus into reserves to fund that increase in the budget as well. So motion number three requests, references the request to carry forward the eight identified operating projects into 2025 and provide that additional funding for the two operating projects listed.
Questions, Counselor Phobes?
On this one, line six, it says that the operating project summary expected the final draft. I noticed with the SCADA one that it's now the end of March. Do we have an idea when that's coming in?
Mr. Zier?
Thank you. Through the chair, we did receive the report just recently, in the last couple weeks here, so.
That is a question?
Okay, any other questions, Counselor Phobes?
Sorry, line thirteen, you're speaking through the process of tendering. It was found out that it needed to be reassessed. I'm thinking that's the Hamlet study, line thirteen.
That's Torrington.
You needed, yes, the utility meter plan for Torrington. Can you, could someone please explain to me what issues were found that required it to be reassessed? I got a question.
Yes, thank you. So through the chair, what administration has done here is taken both the Swalwell Utility Master Plan as well as the Torrington and combined them into a joint master plan here. So we put that out as a joint tender this year. Actually, for economies of scale, we figured we're at this point of the process here, I got back some very competitive bids and actually awarded it earlier this month, so.
Okay, so the reassessment was the combination of Torrington and Swalwell?
Correct, yes.
To be one project?
Correct, yes. So the kickoff meeting will start putting out notifications for residents there. We'll have some staff and contractors in the area starting to do assessments.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any, so I assume that means we're going on to the capital project summary, Appendix D.
Absolutely. Okay, so similar to the operating projects, this one details all our capital projects that we undertook during the year. There were twenty-seven capital projects included within the 2024 budget. And again, the appendix includes the project name, budget, funding sources, the costs incurred to end of 2024, any variances, the year-end status, any carryforward amounts and their funding sources, start date, end date, and any comments related to the project. Of those twenty-seven projects, thirteen were completed during the year. Three were over budget, and motion number three requests additional funding be drawn from the appropriate reserve to fund that difference. One was canceled, and it's just pending further information from a study being completed in the 2025 budget. And then thirteen are being requested to be carried forward with the existing available budget, or in a couple cases, I believe, one, a slightly reduced budget than what was available at the end of 2024. And motion number four references the request to carry forward those thirteen identified capital projects for completion in 2025.
Okay, Counselor Phobes, please.
Line three, the Three Hills Local Facilities Projects, what contributed to the increase in cost?
Through the chair, I believe this was just some contractor costs that were exceeded what our anticipated amount was. This was actually a project that was carried forward from 2023 into 2024. And actually, at the end of 2023, we reduced the amount that was going to be carried forward to fifty thousand from the original amount. And it turned out, we probably shouldn't have reduced it as much as we did. So there was actually originally at the end of 2023 more funds available for that project. And some of that was just a timing difference between when some invoices came in and when Q4 happened last year.
Go ahead, Counselor Phobes.
So then on line seven, about the capital equipment plan purchases, you have eight units delivered, nine carrying forwards, six leased vehicles. So when I look at that, this is from 2024, correct? So what happens to the ones we've approved for 2025? Are we going to be behind on that as well? That was a question I've received.
No, it would, we were still planned 2025 based on the ability to complete things in 2025. Realistically, with those carryforwards, only three are actually waiting to be delivered. Those, the other six are leased vehicles that we're continuing to operate and just funding them out of the capital equipment plan reserve and out of that program until we determine whether that's something we're going to do on an ongoing basis or whether we might revert back to purchasing those units rather than leasing them.
Can I just ask all my questions?
Yes, Counselor Phobes, yeah.
Line nine, what contributed to the increased cost of the CPO office rentals?
Through the chair, again, that was just a small variance that resulted in the contracted services was slightly over what we anticipated when we originally budgeted for the project.
And my last one, which is on line twenty-six, could you please explain the significant difference between the budgeted amount of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand and the actual expenditure of seventy-nine thousand? Additionally, what steps will administration take to address and rectify any discrepancies in future budgeting processes? Also a question I received.
Through the chair, this is actually a project we have typically on the budget every year for about that amount. And so it really ends up depending on exactly what bridges need major maintenance done within the year. We separate it out as a project and fund it through reserves rather than including it in the operating budget because the amount is kind of uncertain in any given year. So it's typically one that is included. It's been included in the last several budgets. And sometimes we use more of it, and sometimes we use less of it. And when we don't use it all, it just, the money ends up staying in the reserve and doesn't get drawn. So really, it's just our way of actually trying to ensure that we don't include it in the core operating budget and tax for that amount that's needed because we don't know the exact amount that we're going to need in any given year.
So would this relate to things like bridge decking and that type of replacement work that goes on by our road crews when they're not doing other work? And so, would that possibly be included in this or not necessarily?
No, actually, through the chair, this is specific to bridge inspections that we get done years prior. This is a really innovative program, actually, to actually go out and we core some of the bridges, make sure that if there's any rot in there, any ones that raise concern from the bridge inspector, we put on this list here. Then we go out, do these minor repairs, what we call minor repairs. It's still a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, but compared to replacement of a major bridge, this is very minor. Extending the life of these out ten, twenty years from finding small problems and repairing them off the bat there. So, this is a little more intrusive. We actually have contractors come in and do all the work under this budget. But it is pile replacement, girder, strengthening, all those sort of things, so.
Okay, so we budget a certain amount in, so that we have the money available, and then we do the projects that are identified.
Correct.
Okay, so the carryover is just, we didn't use that money because we didn't need it, which is good. Okay? Any other questions? Not seeing any, so that means we're probably going on to cash and investments. It's always nice to talk about cash.
Absolutely. So Appendix E speaks to the cash held at Q, end of Q4, and what our interest rates are. So we've got, at that time, we had between four-point-four and six-point-zero-five percent interest rates. And again, as the prime interest rate changes, those amounts are going to change as some of these investments become due or the GICs expire, we have to reinvest them. And typically, at this point, at a lower rate than what we've been seeing in the last few years. But yeah, that's just a summary of what we're holding and how we're investing the county's finances. And then, moving on from there, there's the reserve continuity of Appendix F. And so this tracks the movements based on council approvals of each of the county's reserves. And again, this only changes, the council has to approve any amounts that are moved in and out of these reserves. So whether there's projects amended, budgets amended, expenditures are approved, projects are completed under budget. So within this schedule, we have the operating budget contributions, which include any amounts that were contributed based on prior motions of council. We have 2024 draws, which include any projects. Those couple of draws for the ACME Alumni Association and those Troschu Fire Truck repairs are included in those amounts. Anything that was drawn for approved projects. And then it comes to that 2024 ending balance. So that's the amount, if council didn't do anything today, didn't approve any carryforward projects, didn't do anything, that would be the amount that would be available at the start of 2025. But then we've also got those recommended motions, which tie to Appendix G. And we've got the amounts that are being requested to be carried forward, and then the projected 2025 opening balance. I do have within the report that, so there's, we're projecting to have that opening balance of that sixty-nine-point-nine million dollars. But if we pulled, if we actually consider all of the projects and approvals that were done and contributions that were included in the 2025 budget, the actual currently available reserve balance is sixty-seven million, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. And that's if you include all the motions recommended today, including carryforwards, reserve contributions, and everything that is included within the 2025 budget.
Would you repeat that number one more time?
Yep, and it's actually in the very bottom line of this reserve continuity. I did include it in there. That's sixty-seven million, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty. So that considers all council motions that have been made to date. All right.
I did find the number, thank you.
I had that one only on hand last year, not written in the report, so I added it in the report this year properly.
You said it quickly enough that I couldn't quite write it down fast enough, so.
Well, and that's kind of the amount I'm paying attention to, is that like cumulative impact of all decisions council's been made when we look at what those balances are.
Okay. I don't see any questions, so we can keep moving forward.
Awesome. All right, so that brings me to my last appendix of this report, which is Appendix G, and it speaks to recommendations by administration of how to handle that surplus and ensure that that money ends up in reserves. If we didn't do this, the extra funds, now again, the number's a little bit different in the financial statements just based on the way the financial statements are written versus the way this report is written. But that money would end up effectively being in an unallocated surplus, so it would exist but not directly put into the reserves. So when we do this, it means that we're taking those extra funds that were included in the budget this year, and we're directly putting them into reserves for future use and accessibility. So within that, there's a few different categories that I've included. The first one is related to specific unbudgeted revenue variances. So the first one is return on investments, and this is recommending the remaining surplus of one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-nineteen dollars generated by interest rates to be contributed, five-hundred-thousand dollars to the infrastructure reserve, five-hundred-thousand dollars to the capital equipment plan reserve, and two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-nineteen dollars to the building capital replacement reserve. Then there's capital equipment plan sales, which recommends the remaining surplus of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars generated by the sale of capital equipment to be contributed back to the capital equipment plan reserve to future capital, fund future purchases. And then there's the special taxes in frontage, which recommends that thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars generated by water connections be contributed to the water reserve to fund future water infrastructure requirements. Then there's two contributions that relate to those strategic initiatives and corporate initiatives, operating projects, and topping up those funding. So effectively taking 2024 surplus and putting it away so that we can draw that to fund those projects increases in 2025. And so strategic initiatives has a recommended contribution of sixty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars to be contributed into the contingency reserve, and then twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-six dollars being contributed to the revenue stabilization reserve to fund the corporate initiatives project. And then related to the remaining surplus, so this is surplus that isn't necessarily directly tied to any one specific thing. It's just the cumulative remaining surplus of the budget from 2024. And so, we include one contribution of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the revenue stabilization reserve. This is specifically intended to fund the reserve draw that was used to balance the budget for 2025, so we're putting that money out of 2024 surplus to fund that draw in 2025. And that ensures that we're not actually drawing down that revenue stabilization reserve available balance. And then with the remaining amount to contribute, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the parks reserve, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the water reserve, and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the bridges reserve. And after considering all of those contributions, the adjusted surplus is thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions? Clear as can be. Thank you for all that work. It's a lot of information in front of us there, so thank you. Okay, there's a number of motions that we've been asked to consider in terms of reserve contributions, taking care of over-budget operating projects, draws for capital, building capital replacement, and a number of other capital project carryforwards. And so, what's the wish of council? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'll gladly make the first motion, that council approve the reserves contribution of two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight and three-hundred-and-four as detailed in Appendix G.
Okay, so we have a motion that we approve the reserve contributions of two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-four dollars as was detailed in Appendix G. Are there any questions to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. Counselor Whitstock?
I would move that council approve a draw of two thousand and fifty-seven dollars from the contingency reserve to fund over-budget operating projects as detailed in Appendix C.
Okay. So, we have a motion now to approve the draw that's requested of two thousand and fifty-seven dollars from the contingency reserve to fund over-budget operating projects as was outlined in Appendix C. Any questions, discussion, related to the motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Again, that's carried unanimously. Councilor Christie.
I'd make the motion to approve $708,514 of operating project carryforwards, including funding sources as detailed in Appendix C.
So this is basically authorizing the carryforward funds needed to complete those projects carried out of 2024.
That is correct.
Okay. So we have the motion to approve the $708,514 of operating project carryforwards, including funding sources as detailed in Appendix C. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's also carried unanimously. Thank you. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd move that council approve a draw of $16,432 from the building capital replacement reserve and $14,676 from the roads we preserve to fund over-budget capital projects as detailed in Appendix D.
Okay. So again, we are approving a draw of $16,432 from the building capital replacement reserve and $14,676 from the road reserve to fund over-budget capital projects as were detailed in Appendix D. Are there any questions related to that motion? Or discussion? I am not seeing any. Ask the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. Councilor Phobes.
Okay, the council approved $4,358,753 of capital project carryforwards, including funding sources as detailed in Appendix D.
Okay, again, this is 2024 capital project carryforwards and the funding that was previously approved, so council approves $4,358,753 of capital project carryforwards, including funding sources as was detailed in Appendix D. Are there any questions regarding the motion? Again, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's also carried unanimously. All right, thank you. And again, Marika, I know you probably didn't do all the math and all the but you did sit here and deliver all the information. Thank you, and please carry our thanks to all those who are involved. It's very much appreciated. Okay. Thanks again. Always enjoy when you come and give us good news. Exactly. All right, we have a delegation that's coming at 11:00, so I'm going to suggest that we take a recess until 11:00, which allows us to refresh our coffees and get ready for accurate assessment, so we're in recess.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning. It's now eleven oh two, so I'm gonna call our meeting back to order. And the next item in our agenda is our friends from Accurate Assessment. So gentlemen, please come join us. Don't be shy. Welcome. We are good. So I'm pretty sure you know all of us, but just to make sure you haven't forgotten who's who, we'll allow some introductions and then certainly we'll allow you to go from there. So if you would please, Counselor Cunningham, you can start.
So Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division five, so I'm in area kind of surrounding the Three Hills area.
Morning, guys. Jerry Whitstock. Don't assess me.
Well, there you go. That's automatic a reason to go check him out. I think he's in the twenty twenty-five assessment area anyway, so. Anyway, good morning. I'm Ken King. I represent the northeast portion of Neale County.
Hello, I'm Fay McGee from Division one area.
Carrie Phobes, Division four.
Wade Christie, Division six, so the northwest.
Go ahead.
Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Carolyn Vandercoel, the Legislative Services Manager.
Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services.
Hi, good morning. Mike Zier, Director of Infrastructure.
Good morning, Teresa Cochran, Director of Corporate Services.
So I imagine there was no surprises in that list at all, so welcome. And Troy, I'll let you take off and you introduce you guys and.
Excellent.
Make your presentation.
Thank you. As you know, my name is Troy Burdles with Accurate Assessment. I am your appointed assessor. And to my left.
Chris Meadows, Accurate Assessment. Kent Smith, Accurate Assessment.
So I am going to start today with the first few slides. I'm gonna let Chris get into the numbers with you. As always, please feel free to ask any questions at any point. It sometimes is easier to do it that way, but whatever you prefer, so. Do we have? Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. You might wanna run this. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on the beginning slides, but I do like to show off our client map. We find it quite impressive. One important note this year, we did add another rural municipality. So our experience with you folks in Neale County has allowed us the opportunity to help other municipalities in rural Alberta. So it's a great partnership we have going on. Again, I always stop at this slide to quickly mention that should you as council and administration have any questions about assessment, please feel free to reach out and ask. It's always better to answer a question with the correct information. Not saying that you don't know it, but sometimes, you know, the answers can be made up and not necessarily represent what is the real case. So I just wanna make sure that you're aware. Please feel free. Our phones are always on. So before I pass it over to Chris, I just wanna show a list of our staff that you may see out in the field. Mostly, your ratepayers will see Chris. His vehicle is always identified with our logos and the county logos, right? And just so people know who he is and what he's doing as well, he wears identification tags. Just if there's any questions. And in today's landscape, questions are more common, which is fine. We'd rather a ratepayer dig in a little further and say, hey, who's this guy in this white pickup in my yard? Is he legitimately working for the county or is he just scoping me out? So we encourage those kinds of questions from ratepayers. With that, I'm gonna pass it off to Chris.
Okay, so here it is. So here you can see the difference between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So grand total wise, we saw a ten percent increase in assessment, which is pretty substantial. And then broken down, we have fourteen percent on the rez side, four to five percent on the non-res and dip. Linear sixteen percent, and Kent will speak a little bit more on that. And then obviously farmland regulated there, not much change. And exempt properties, not much change as well. So we'll break down a little bit more as far as like construction and growth change. You'll see in a few slides where a majority of that change comes from. But here's, this is the grand total, I guess, of all assessment. It's just another way of showing the comparison on the assessment history. As you can see, steady growth in the rez and linear. And then, yeah, not so much on the farmland, obviously, because that is regulated. Assessment total history compare over the last five years. Again, you can see pretty normal increases. And then this year, a little bit more than what we've seen in the past few years. Taxable assessment change by percentage. So this will be kind of what the ratepayers will be seeing. Ninety-six percent will either see no change or between a one and twenty-five percent increase on their assessments. So again, quite a few people will be seeing an increase. And the no change is a majority of like farm, farmland assessment. This slide showing kind of the same numbers, just based on dollar amount. So again, ninety-five percent in the range that we show. And then a majority, or not a majority, but quite a few will see a larger increase. New rolls and permit comparison, so this is just over the last five years. Twenty-three new rolls in twenty twenty-four. Those would be mostly just subdivisions that have been taken out. And new development permits, we had seventy-two last year. So this kind of shows, I guess, more of the the increase, I guess, based on like growth or inflation. So as you can see here, majority of the increase was market driven. So construction is the growth, basically new permits, new houses, that kind of stuff. Inflation, obviously, based on the market. So Three Hills area saw fourteen and a half percent increase. Rural North, twelve point seven. Rural Southwest, fifteen. And you see rural East and Helms here as well. So mostly around that thirteen to fifteen percent increase. And obviously, a majority of that increase was market driven. And this slide here just shows the total. So back when I did the first slide, it was fourteen percent increase. This is so the thirteen point nine percent new construction similar to last year. And then, as you can see, the market steadily increasing at a big jump this year compared to last year. And as we spoke about a little earlier, this year, we'll be doing our reinspection, where we do the twenty percent reinspection every year. We'll be in the southern area, I guess. I'll actually be out starting next month. So I'll let Regina and the staff know that we'll be out and we'll let the ratepayers know that, to expect me in that area. So during the spring, we do the reinspection like we do every year. And then we'll come back out in the fall winter and do a full reinspection of the whole county, check on any new permits, any sales that we need to confirm information on, that kind of stuff. So moving forward, like I said, we'll continue with the global inspections. We'll be in the Linden Carbon area, all new construction to be reviewed. And then obviously, strong market growth recognized again last year. We'll continue to monitor in twenty twenty-five. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor Phobes.
Yes, I'm gonna get this when I go home. Can you just explain the continue with global inspections on the Linden and Carbon area? What does that entail? What does it mean for the person who might be watching this?
Right, so I guess we're mandated by the government to visit every property at least once every five years. So definitely be driving past every property for sure. If there's a reason to maybe go in and confirm some information, we'll go in, knock on the door, try and talk to the ratepayer or the homeowner as much as possible. If we can do it from the road, we will. Both some of the inspect, like, we are there to maybe take some pictures to update our files. So I will ask the ratepayer if it's okay if I take a picture before I do. So that, and then, yeah. Lately, it's been a lot, well, not, more people have eyes on everybody, like, there's, people know that we're there. So we'll leave a callback card at the gate if it's locked or whatever. If we need information or if I can just do it from the road without talking to the homeowner, we will. But sometimes it's, I don't know. They don't like you from the roads doing stuff, but then they don't like you going in, so it's like to each their own, I guess, sometimes, but we try and be as visible as we can be.
The purpose, the purpose of this is to collect data that may have been missed based on permits that weren't taken out, right? It's not very common anymore that you can get away with building a new home without a permit, but sometimes it happens. So, so that's really the purpose. And then there's also little things like farm buildings that aren't taxed anyways or additions or renovations that probably don't have permits. So we update our information.
Or, I mean, like, people may take a garage down but not tell the county, then they're paying more than they should be. So we can confirm that, that way. It's not always trying to find. There are, we take, if the mobile home has been removed or something and they don't tell anybody, then we take it off.
That's a, that's a common one. The mobile homes move in and out all the time. And rarely, I shouldn't, maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, unless they let the county know or let us know, it's hard for us until we, unless we do this drive-by inspection kind of thing, so.
So this is, it's a government mandated process, right? Like, you're, you have to look at all the properties every five years.
Within a five-year period.
And then you, on top of that, you do all the new construction permits and all that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you could probably get away with something for five years, but sooner or later, someone's gonna come and look.
Yeah, and you know, I have to commend our staff, like, we're now very familiar with your municipality. So if Chris is driving to the area that we have flagged for the twenty twenty-five inspections and he drives by a property and says, wait a minute, I don't remember that there. He's gonna do what he needs to do to update the assessment, whether or not it's in the area.
Yeah.
Right, and the same would be if we're reviewing a file in the office. Maybe it's sold and it's sold for way more money than we have it assessed at. We'll flag it. We'll go to the property and see, is there a reason why it's sold that much more or that much less? Or whatever the case. So it's not just permits that we reinspect. It's also all of the properties that we flag for review for a number of reasons.
Well, and part of your determination of market value is based on what's happening in terms of the sales in the marketplace. And if there's a flyer, an abnormal sale, you really wanna know why that occurred.
That's right. And it's very common for there to be family transactions that don't fall in line with market and they're, they're coded out of the analysis automatically. So, so, you know, it's cleansed in that regard.
Yeah. Counselor Cunningham, you had a question?
So just back to page fourteen, like, the different breakdowns of residential non-res. Unfortunately, I've gotten to understand this more than I ever thought I would. But just for the people that are listening, I know down in your presentation, you're gonna talk about the industrial piece. But could you just give the quick calls and notes, like, what's linear property? What would be an exempt property?
Page, which page?
Uh, so keep going. I think you're up right there. So like, what, I mean, I think we know what residence is, but there would just be some of those entities that people wouldn't understand what they entail.
Absolutely. So residential assessments are just what that means. It's what you live at. If there's a vacant piece of land that is not farmed, it falls into that residential category, even though you're not living there. Lots of people get hung up on that. I don't, I don't live there. Why is it residential? It's a, it's not farmland, it's not machinery and equipment, and it's not commercial. So therefore, it's residential, is how the act reads, basically.
So if, if it's a subdivision and nothing's on it, then that would be considered residential? If it's, used to be an old farmyard and it's vacant, that's just considered?
That if it's an old farmyard and it's vacant and the balance of the parcel is farmed, then it's farmland. It would all fall into that farmland category. If there's a three-acre site, like, a market site with buildings, that part of it would fall under the residential and the farmland piece would fall under the farmland category. And then the designated industrial property and linear property, Kent's gonna just talk about that a little bit more. But essentially, designated indentural property is property that's controlled by the AER and a bunch of other acronyms that he'll spout off. But so all the oil and gas facilities that you see across the municipality fall under that dip category. And then the linear would be things like the pipelines and the wells that go down and across. Your rail lines, all that's linear, linear property.
So can you just clarify too? We've had this thing about the tax holiday for oil and gas.
Yeah.
The tax holiday that was in place relates to the linear side of the assessment, not the.
Not the dip.
Dip side, right?
That's right.
Okay.
And Kent will talk a bit more about that for sure. He'll give you the exact numbers. But as you see, there's two categories on this chart that really stick out, and one of them is linear. And a huge reason why it sticks out is because that tax holiday is over and now that three years' worth of assessment is on the roll. So had, had that been assessed over the last three years, you wouldn't see a sixteen percent increase year over year. But with regards to the other one that sticks out, the residential category, as Chris discussed earlier and showed, there wasn't a huge amount of new construction, new assessment in that regard. The majority of it is because people are paying more money for the properties. And that directly translates into higher assessments.
And before we jump off this page, just talk a little bit about the exempt category.
A number of things contribute to that category. This building, for example, is one. If you're a farmer, your farm buildings fall into that category. Any churches or schools, any of that kind of facility falls under the exempt assessment. There are property types that are listed in the MGA that are not assessable property, which are roads, for example. So that isn't assessed. You don't see any of the value of that in here. Bridges, signs, all that stuff, none of that's assessed. What did I miss for exempt? There may, I don't think there's any federal government, but federal or provincial government facilities could fall under exempt. If it meets the right criteria, it could fall under what they call G-POT or PILT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. So that, if that were the case, it would fall under the rez or non-res side. So county-owned property is all exempt.
Majority of the exempt is farm buildings.
Yeah.
So the other question, again, just for clarification before we move off of this. We talk about farm home property. So you have a house and you have, you know, four shops and multiple granaries and grain handling system and all that stuff. When you're assessing those, under the residential portion would be three acres and the house and.
And whatever buildings aren't farm buildings.
Okay, so then the rest of the buildings are farm buildings and they're exempt.
Yeah.
So let's say I own that property and I have two shops. And in my one shop, I'm flying under the radar and I'm doing a welding business in that shop. How does that get then A, identified and B, assessed?
Okay, great question. That's part of what we do in our twenty percent. If you're running a welding business out of your shop, there are signs of the fact that you're running a welding business. And quite literally, there probably is a sign that says, hey, I'm running a welding business here. That's the first tell. And then the second tell is the non-res or the commercial type of business, vehicles and, and equipment and supplies or whatever that might be around. So when Chris is out and doing the reinspection and he sees we have four farm buildings assessed, but clearly that one, there's a welding business, he then digs in further, goes, interviews the property owner, finds out exactly what is happening there. And so then from an assessment perspective, the valuation of it is the same, but we flip it to a non-res assessment class from an exempt assessment class. Then therefore, they pay the commercial tax rate on that. And then we would also add a small portion of the land, well, I shouldn't say small. A portion of the land would be also taxed at the non-res. So if an example, if in that example, let's say it's just a small operation, we might put a five or 10%. But if, if the site has a, an older home that's not valued at much and they have a hundred by two hundred square foot warehouse, that's all non-res. Well, then we would put a higher weighting on the land at the non-res rate.
So that portion, whatever is determined involved with that business, gets assessed at the non-residential rates.
Taxed at the non-res rate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think you had used the term commercial rate, but that's really non-residential.
That same thing, yeah, exactly.
We had a recent example where we had a ratepayer who has an actual bare acreage property that is being used partially for a commercial purpose. And so the whole acreage is assessed under that non-residential rate because there's nothing else on there but what's actually happening.
Right.
And so the concern that was raised was, well, I'm only using a portion of that, but because it's an acreage, it was very hard to separate it. And so let's say he was doing that exact same business, but now it's not an acreage. It's just a portion in the quarter that's being utilized. Would you take then the same approach where you'd look at the acreage and assess what's being used for commercial and then?
We would take an area in use.
Okay.
Scale it out using the orthophotography and determine the acreage that's used for the non-res and then that. Scale it out using the orthophotography and determine the acreage that's used for the non-res and then that would be taxed, so. If it's on a full quarter and he's using five acres for this, whatever, then he's getting assessed five acres at market. Which is significantly higher than the balance of the quarter at farmland.
Okay, no, that helps that that clarifies that. Always get those questions around, you know, I mean, my neighbor in that back shop, he's got a little commercial business going on there, how do you guys?
Yeah, and and that's another.
Sometimes it's really hard to find it or know that it's happening if there's no signage or anything, so.
And and Regina will, and if somebody tells her something, she always passes it on to us to follow up and we'll flag it and do what we need to do.
So Regina is kind of a reporter poacher line?
Dismissed, dismissed.
Now to throw a curveball in your s- system, how do you deal with hetero colonies with commercial ventures? Multiple conver- commercial.
Same way, um, uh, cause that's very common, right? So if a particular colony has a. Welding or truss making or whatever, then that portion is assessed at non-res as well. They're harder to. Harder to track in some cases, but um we have our ways, um, we we contact them, right? And there's a new colony being built as well. So, well, we're keeping our eyes on it.
That's a question I often get, and I say if it's a commercial business, it's being assessed that way, if they realize it's there, so.
Yeah, that's right. It's been pretty good, you know, when we roll up on on the colony and usually they're very inviting. There's been cases where it's. Get out, don't want you here. You gotta ask the question, why is that? Right, so. Any other questions before we pass it off to Kent?
I I think that helped uh quite a bit, I appreciate that. Kent, you you are taking responsibility for the rest of it, are you?
I'll do my best here, yeah, for sure. So I'm Kent, uh, part of the industrial team. Uh, Sean Barrett was scheduled to come, but he had a another obligation, so I'm filling in on his behalf. Uh, so this is our behind the scenes industrial team, there's. Ten of us, uh, that can be a resource at any given time throughout the year. What is non-designated industrial property? So on an annual basis. The industrial assessment team maintains the assessment for non-designated industrial property. So industrial properties that are not regulated by the AER, the CR, or the AUC. In Neale County, some examples of these uh are but not limited to grain terminals. Fertilizer blending facilities, meat processing facilities, bitcoin operation, honey processing plants. Or MDF facilities. So utilizing our team of specialized industrial assessors, we provide these services to you on a annual basis. Tax incentives, uh, in twenty twenty, there was a number of tax incentives that were put in place. When Alberta's previous review of a regulated assessment property was paused. Uh, at that time, a three year property tax holiday on new wells and pipelines was introduced. To help promote new investment and economic activity in the energy sector. This tax holiday has ended as as planned uh at the end of the twenty four. Uh, municipal tax year for the twenty five taxation year. So any new wells and pipelines completed in twenty twenty one and future years are now subject to taxation. Uh, the well and pipeline tax impact for the twenty four assessment year for twenty five taxation was approximately seventy two million dollars. Uh, which was added to uh the well and pipeline tax holiday. Two other assessment based measures that are currently. To support vi- the viability of mature oil and gas assets uh are the shallow gas. Tax and also the low producing well uh depreciation adjustment. So these measures are intended to bridge. As a bridge to the new inflammation of new assessment models and. Will therefore be extended until the assessment model review is complete and the regulated assessment models for wells are updated. So as you guys might be aware, currently there's an assessment model review um underway. Uh, Ray and Sean from our office are active in this process. Currently uh s- working in the stage two. Um, just about to finish up uh that part of the the model review. Um, post that stage, there's still a few more stages to go. Uh, coming in the winter twenty five, they're gonna be reviewing uh group one properties which are telecommunications, cable. Railway, electric power. Um, next spring to the summer twenty seven is when machinery and equipment, pipelines and wells will be reviewed. And then later on down the line, there are stage four will be uh when municipalities and industrial property owners will have the opportunity. To provide input on assessment and taxation impacts. That's all we have for you guys.
Okay, well, thank you, Kent, um, I think we're fairly familiar with the fact there's an assessment review taking place and. Um, our CAO fortunately for us sits at that table and we're very thankful for his presence there and the work that he's doing there. So, but uh we're on a little bit anxious about that process.
I can imagine.
Um, Council Whitstock, you had a question?
Yes, I do, thank you, um, so you get a well drilled in twenty two, two thousand and twenty two. You've got three years of depreciation on that well because it won't be taxed till twenty five. There's no place in there that there's no justification or magic. Whatever you wanna call that number to to get it back to the initial cost of the well. I guess in a in essence, a well that's drilled in twenty five will now be fully taxed. But a well that was drilled in twenty two has the advantage of being depreciated for three years.
Go ahead, Kent.
Yeah, so that's correct, so the in your initial uh. Observation, they're well drilled in twenty two, so it. The taxes were withheld for the three years, then they are now currently implemented for this year, so they're not missed. They were just compound or.
I think you're you're asking if.
They're not missed.
Is a well that was assessed in twenty twenty two but not taxed because of the holiday. Assessed lower than this exact same well that's drilled in twenty twenty five. But there's fixed and immediate depreciation that's applied to all new. Machinery equipment and linear assessments, so correct me if I'm wrong, Kent, but I think they would be the same. Because they're depreciated down to seventy five percent right out of the gates anyways, and they always have been.
Yeah, so they still would be assessed the same on the same principles, they may not be assessed exactly the same depending on the nature of the well. The depth of the well, uh, and then each year that AYMs would factor into what the assessment of that well would.
That would be the difference, yeah.
So they have changed over the years, so. Tense your question, no, they won't be exactly the same depending on which year it was because of the modifiers that were placed during that year.
But you might you might not be aware of the fixed and immediate depreciation, like it's. If if the thing costs a hundred thousand, it's not necessarily assessed at a hundred thousand. Because of all of the variables that come into play, and one of those variables, AYM is one, but another one is the fixed and immediate depreciation. And and it's more than what would be applied in three years anyways.
So you're saying that that fixed and immediate depreciation, you said about a twenty five percent value?
Yeah, right, it's.
Yeah, so there's seventy five percent. It's assessed at seventy five percent right off the bat, so your hundred thousand would turn to seventy five thousand of assessment.
So your fifty million would turn into, so we recognize that the value of those. Wells is probably more than a hundred thousand.
That's right.
And so the loss of assessment in that twenty five percent is is a big piece. But that's automatic across the board for all of that type of development.
That's a that's a function of regulated assessment in Alberta, there's a formula that gets applied and that's just part of the formula.
So that was only applied to the wells and pipelines, so if there was any surface improvements, like a tank or a building, like a separator package. That still would get assessed on an annual basis, even throughout the tax holiday.
Yeah, and so all that on the surface stuff that we see. Yeah, correct. Even during the holiday, it's the. Go ahead, Council Whitstock.
Yeah, just a supplemental, uh, has the province come out with their assessment year modifier yet?
They have, yes.
Where are we at?
So. It's roughly an average of five percent of it across the board, so wells and wells were were up five point three percent. Pipelines are up four point seven, your electric power is up five point four. Telecommunications is up four point six, cable distribution is four point six as well. Uh, your machinery and equipment is five point four percent and railway is up four point nine percent.
So the AYM will be one point zero five roughly.
O- over the year before.
Yeah, compared to the year before, yes.
And I think I think you might be interested to hear too, um, we 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 chatted briefly about this, that. The GOA has come out and said that the calculation of the AYMs is now based on a more. Formalized mechanism rather than in the past that might have been a little bit arbitrary. Yeah, I see nodding head over here, so um. It it means something, whereas if you look over the over the years. There was a couple of years that there wasn't much change and even a drop, and I think there was a little bit of political pressure at the time and that's more. Influenced the decision about the AYM than real numbers, so it's, I think, encouraging to hear that there's a better way to calculate it now.
Mr. Hogan, you had a comment?
Um, through, I can I can build on that just from sitting literally at that table that uh that put those through. So it's exactly right, it's in the past, the the AYM was not a transparently developed figure. Um, and could be subject to the whims of, could be subject to political whims, right, which we've seen in the past. The uh, the discussion around the table was was bringing the AYM calculation to something that is a lot more transparent. So now there's there's several indices that Stats Canada produces that the AYMs will be based upon, so you can go back and see what's being done there. Um, so that's what was agreed to by the groups in principle and what the GOA went forward with this year. In future years, there's still gonna be some refinement of that, based on on some actual numbers and percentages related to different types of properties, but. Essentially, the idea was driving it back to transparently publicly available numbers. That it's gonna be based on that rather than the whim of whatever minister of the day is is in place, so. The general process is there, there's still some refinement to do, but yeah, I think it's in a much better spot than than before.
Well, I think the lack of confidence in that other assessment model review process that's going on is that. It doesn't become a political driven agenda thing, which is the fear of all rural municipalities. But that it's actually based on real live factual numbers and information, and so there's not that. Fudge factor that Council Whitstock referred to built into that, because then it's. Anybody's game is anybody's business and we we can't plan on unpredictable data, so.
And if there's any inconsistencies or errors in the process, it's only compounded when the the factors and modifiers are at a whim.
All right, other questions, Council Cunningham, please?
So this has kind of been a hot topic since it kind of came out the last week and then when we were up at our rural municipalities conference, but could you just explain to us? How the province determines the education tax portion, like if it's based on the assessed value of your property or how that works?
Have the information to give you, um, from what I understand, they say. Neale County, we need X amount of money from you this year, and so your question is how do they determine what that number is? Uh, I don't know. I, that's a that's a case where, um, like I said earlier, if you don't know the question, don't try to make it up, cause I totally would be making that one up. But then how, whatever that number is, of course, is divided by your assessment base, and that's what the the school tax rate is that gets applied. Um, and in your case, with a fourteen percent increase in your residential assessment. I mean, it unless the school requisition is more than fourteen percent. I would think then the math would work that the school tax rate should go down, but I don't know what the requi- requisition number is, so.
It's an additional six hundred thousand plus almost.
From what's the original, like six hundred thousand on top of what? Yeah, what what was last year's?
We were. Hmm, I have to do a little thinking on that one.
I've got it too, Ken. You had um the RIV had sent an email.
Wasn't it five and a half, five point six million last year, it's gonna be six point two or something like that?
So it was five. Okay, so let's just say, say six hundred thousand on six million for easy figures, that's ten percent increase, your assessment base went up by fourteen. You know, it mathematically speaking, you should be able to drop your education tax rate. And still collect that six point two million dollars for the problems. Theoretically anyways. Yeah, we we do like to distance ourselves from the tax ca- tax rate calculation, but.
No, but you know, so. It's a legitimate question, cause we get it all the time, and I appreciate the fact that you just say, sorry, that's on the side of our volume.
Yeah, um, I'm not really sure what the provincial mandate is on their education, um. I don't know if you wanna call it rebuild or upgrade or whatever, but I think they announced thirteen or sixteen new schools in the province. Does it mean mean that there's gonna be one built in Neale County? But I don't, I don't know if their system is built to collect money from Neale County to help pay for those thirteen schools in other jurisdictions. Or if those other jurisdictions are responsible for paying for the whole thing. I don't know, it's good if one way until it's not, if you're getting a school built in your jurisdiction, you know what I mean, like.
It's always interesting, cause we send out the tax notice, we collect that and we become responsible from a taxpayer point of view. And so I know that's completely outside of what you came here today to help us with, so.
It's it's part of our field all day to day, for sure.
Council folks?
Um, just for the people watching in the public, if they would like to watch this, could you just give us a quick rundown on how um. Facilities like solar facilities and wind facilities are taxed.
So solar facility, not a solar farm, just kidding. Uh, solar facilities and wind facilities are assessed by the linear department of the province, so. It's based on um wattage. Yeah.
Usually cost of construction would be factored in.
So the the fa- the facility, just what did it, the facility north of town here is all assessed by linear, including a portion of the land. And then there's a small piece of the land that isn't used by the facility, that's assessed and taxed to the property owner. As far as the wind, um, towers go, um, of course, they're all over the place, there's not a concentrated site, so. There would be a portion of the land included with the linear as well, but for for the most part, the land owner of those. Where those towers are situated, the land would be assessed as farmland, provided it's farmed. So they they would have very little impact. the land would be assessed as farmland, provided it's farmed. So they they would have very little impact, no impact really, on their assessment and tax. Um, as far as the actual numbers go, again, the province provides that, calculates it, it's regulated, they have their formulas and it just is a flow through. Might not answer it for your ratepayers, but.
So one of the interesting things we've seen in the last year's assessment was where they put communication towers onto the actual landowners' tax bill.
Yeah.
Um, and so that was a bit of a surprise for some of our landowners who actually have a number of communication towers and then all of a sudden their tax bill went from what was five hundred dollars for a quarter of land to fifteen or twenty thousand dollars and they're like, whoa. And I understand that was driven by government policy change or?
Not necessarily change, but it's been a process or a practice in the county that wasn't correctly followed, so. It was, it was a correction. Now, I'll I'll elaborate a bit on it. Um, a tower is in Neill County typically leased from a property owner. However, um, let's go to Northern Alberta where a tower site would be on the top of the hill out in the middle of nowhere. Well, that's Crown land. In the act, we have the ability to add a new account for anything that's a lease license or a permit from the Crown or municipality, which is the same here. But in these cases, they're not the Crown or the municipality, so therefore the assessment is supposed to be to the landowner and then the responsibility is to, for the landowner to collect the taxes from the company. Um, uh, then the next thing in that regard is industrial property. The Act does allow, if it goes to further to say, but if it's industrial property, it's assessed to the company, not to the landlord. So it's kind of a little bit of a, it works for them but not for those folks. So we had, I I feel the pain this spring with regards to the property owners we're speaking of and we decided to paint it a little grayier and make it easier. And now we have the towers assessed to the company and not the landlord, so.
So in in the current tax year, that the assessment's actually going to go to the comp- go back to the companies now?
Yeah.
Oh, that'll be appreciated.
Yeah, the, and when I spoke, I I'm sure, I think it was yourself that the this particular ratepayer was speaking with anyways.
Yeah.
I explained to him that, you know what, this is, we're gonna, we're changing this and he was very, very thankful of it, so.
Well, for some of them, because they have arrangements made on a lease, right? And so the lease payment is X, but it certainly didn't cover the tax
Yeah.
impacts of that, right?
You know, and really the only body that might come down on us would be the provincial audit department.
Mm-hmm.
And then I will go to to bat for the property owner and say, it, it here's an example of the nightmare that this person had to go through, so you know, you're gonna have to help me here because um, it's just not worth the headache that that property owner has to, has to go through.
Yeah.
So it's, it's fixed.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. It's, it's interesting to me that the whole thing around the solar facilities is that um, because it's now industrial, it all goes to the company, except for the portion of land that's not being used, which goes to the farmer as farmland.
Yeah.
And in this case, now we have a site that's harvested out, just pretty much like an oil well lease thing and a tower sitting on it, but now it's the landowner's responsibility.
Yeah, it's, it worked, it's
It's really weird.
This way for one property type, but not for the other. So that's kind of what made us say, okay, then let's paint it a little grayer and make it easier for the property owner.
That'll be greatly appreciated, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions when we have our experts in the room? And I do appreciate that you took that one on and that you chased that one, um,
Yeah.
for that landowner in particular, but I know there was others who were impacted in the same way, so.
Yep, for sure.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I want to say thank you. Um, certainly, we appreciate that you come every year and that you bring us good news or whatever the news happens to be.
We, we enjoy coming.
Yeah, and we enjoy having you and appreciate the ability to clarify some of those tax questions for us.
And I'll say again, if you got questions throughout the year, we're always open.
Yeah. Well, and you approved that this year, so thank you.
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Kent, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Yeah, appreciate it. Yes, and Chris, always. Uh, we'll see you out there somewhere in a neighborhood near Jerry. Very much appreciated. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, um, the next item in our agenda um, is item six point three, promotional item expenditure report. And I believe this one happens to be yours. Ms. Cochrane? Remember, I was encouraging you to be more involved in the Yep. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And Teresa, whenever you're ready.
Pull it up.
Yeah.
Good almost afternoon, Reeve and council. I'm here to discuss with you a notice of motion for a request on our promotional items expenditure report for the last three years. So the notice of motion that council directed administration to report on internal and external promotional item expenditures over the past three years, and we believe it's to provide transparency and accountability on promotional spending across our departments. And our key focus was to compare our actual expenditures to our budgeted amounts in the twenty-two to twenty-four years. So we thought it was important to define our promotional items because those um, promotional items are very vast and diverse across our organization. Some are internal for our staff, some are and for councils, some are external for promotions and branding and marketing and municipality recognition. So those are things for marketing outreach and engagement that like our peace officers use when they go to the schools and support little people. So we have a, we have a budget each year for staff to get some recognition items for apparel that has Neill County and you've seen some of those things around, I'm sure. Public outreach and engagement materials, and you've seen some of that at the various conferences and events that you've been at. We have sponsorship and stakeholder apprecia- appreciation items such as plaque and partnership gifts. And then, of course, branded materials for awareness campaigns, emergency management guides and safety giveaways. Again, the categories are internal and external, so internal would be for employee engagement and culture building, and those include branded apparel, hoodies, t-shirts, hats, mugs, notebooks, pens, employee recognition, like plaques when they have their twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year awards. Welcome kits for our new staff where they get a small welcome gift with some branding on it. And then external, we're looking at low-cost items such as pens, keychains, stickers and lanyards, event giveaways, trade show items and career fairs. And you'll notice that in twenty twenty-four, there was a bit of a budget increase due to the rebranding and the number of promotional items we um, had made for the Horseshoe Canyon. So our budget versus actual expenditures for twenty twenty-two to twenty-four are included both in the R F D and in front of you on the screen. And you'll notice that it's somewhat difficult for us at this current state to really separate what is internal and external and and what is for which event because we have items buried across various budget items. So we don't have a G L that says promotional items and we use that. We, each department uses a variety of items for their basic needs. So our current challenges in tracking the promotional expenditures are, like I said, they're embedded in various departments. We have a difficulty extracting the amounts allocated to internal and external promotion items without a manual review. So we would need to dig into each receipt and diamond in order to support us finding those exact amounts at this current state. And then some promotional spending is repurposed over multiple years, such as new hire items, event giveaways, and they're used across various occasions. So it's not necessarily year over year. It could span one to three years. And then, of course, we're looking to support improving our financial tracking and management in the future. We'll be implementing a new financial management system in twenty twenty-six. And that allow for a more precise, precise tracking of promotional expenditure. So when you come to ask these questions in a few years, we'll be able to give you much more precise data. We'll have better reporting with alignment of budget allocations and streamlined financial oversight and planning related back to our business objectives around economic development and brand recognition in the communities. And so the propose, proposed motion I have, should you have no questions, is that council accepts the report on promotional item expenditures for the years twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four as information. And I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Cochrane. Um, are there questions regarding the report? Um, and certainly, uh, the detail that's been provided. Counselor Phobes, please.
I appreciate the amount of work that you've put into this. Um, I have had a few questions from public in regards to in twenty twenty-two, we went from basically thirty thousand and last year up to fifty-one thousand. That's quite an increase in items we're giving away. Just wondering if you could speak to that.
Yes, thank you. Through the Chair to Counselor Phobes. So as I indicated, these items aren't directly related only to things we're giving away. It's also marketing and branding apparel for Horseshoe Canyon. So you can see a larger jump because we did a rebranding for Horseshoe Canyon last year. In addition to that, we, we had some H R spending for career fairs that increased the budget for both of the career fairs that we attended. So it will, the budget will go back down next year. It was just an increase for the Horseshoe Canyon and a few small items.
So those two items under corporate items and human resources relates to the rebranding at Horseshoe Canyon and the staff, um, stuff that you're referring to now.
Yes, through the Chair. The one in corporate items also includes our um, amount that staff get each year to support their swag. We get a swag allowance each year, so that's included in that. Corporate items is a bit of a mixed bag across all departments, so it handles a lot of the stuff from the C A O office, economic development, if it's not in the past communications.
Okay. All right. Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
So maybe not a question, um, directly related to this, but just it kind of tweaked with me the Horseshoe Canyon rebranding. I know the one year we were brought items, like it was some shirts and stuff that had been rebranded. Was it last year that there was no items available or there was something that changed in the course of the last few years, if I remember correctly?
Mr. Gannon?
Uh, uh, thank you through the Chair. Uh, I hope I can answer this appropriately for you, Counselor Cunningham. Uh, if not, I will definitely come back with the information. From what I understand is, uh, some of the promotional items are items that are actually sold at Horseshoe Canyon too. So we're looking at the expenditure part, but we're not looking at potentially the return revenue that is being sold as well uh, from those individual areas. So this can be somewhat misleading as this is solely an expenditure. It's not looking at how many items were actually sold for Horseshoe Canyon, how much that expenditure versus that uh, replacement or return in investment for that branding opportunity. Uh, but some of it was also within the giveaway. So uh, we did bring more marketing items and I believe there's actually an R F D in the works for this year to for council's consideration for the same pilot project to continue it and see where that goes as well. So I hope that answers the question, but we've continuously worked with the marketing aspect of selling the items there. We weren't able to do it ourselves, uh, because we don't have the infrastructure to actually do that or the staffing to do that. Uh, but we did, uh, work with a partner that's a campground right near, uh, Horseshoe Canyon to provide and and sell those products on our behalf.
So I think at one point there was a little bit of a hiccup in terms of the supply stream, but that got ironed out.
Through the Chair, that's my understanding, but I will definitely verify that or we will bring it back to council on the report for continuation of that program and provide that information at that time if that's, uh, acceptable to council.
Okay. Counselor Phobes?
Um, just because you triggered me with a question, um, around the clothing, um, costs, we as council can spend up to, I believe it's six hundred dollars a year. What does the staff, four, over four years?
It's a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
A year, okay, perfect. So then what does the staff get?
Hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Yeah, thank you through the, through the Reeve to Counselor Phobes. It's a hundred and fifty dollars a year per employee. Same, it works out to the same amount as council achieves for the four years.
Counselor Phobes?
Can you just remind me again how many employees we have? I thought it was seventy-eight, but I think it's more like eighty-three-ish.
Closer to eighty-eight, I believe. Through the Chair, sorry.
We are formal but informal at the same time, so. I don't, I don't have to get out my gavel to exercise control. Prefer not to have to, let's be sure. Okay, are there any other questions, uh, related to the information that's been provided and certainly uh, my thanks, um, to the staff and yourself for providing the report? But if there are other questions, if not, I would be looking for a motion to accept the report as information. Counselor Phobes?
So moved.
Okay, so we have, um, a motion to accept the report on promotional item expenditures for twenty-two to twenty-four as information. And certainly in the R F D, there was more detail than what you presented, so thank you, Ms. Cochrane, for that. Are there any discussion related to the motion to accept for information? If not, I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And again, our thanks to yourself, Ms. Cochrane, and anyone else who cooperated in producing that report. Okay. Um, because we just had that conversation and because I can exercise my prerogative, we're going to deal with seven point two, um, on our agenda. Um, rather than seven point one, which is policy fifteen dash six promotional items. And Ms. Vander Cool, if you would be so kind.
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Today I bring you policy fifteen dash six promotional items. As part of council's ongoing review of current policies, particularly those that have not been reviewed for more than four years, policy fifteen dash six promotional items is now presented for council's review. Administration brought this item to the February twenty-fifth council meeting. And at that meeting, council tabled this item until the March twenty-fifth council meeting in order for council to review a report on what was dis- what was spent on promotional items for the last three years. Policy fifteen dash six promotional items stated purp- the purpose is to define the distribution of promotional items by Neill County and to establish related procedures. The policy includes guidelines for setting a budget and outlines approval requirements for promotional items exceeding two hundred dollars in value. Administration recommends rescinding this policy as promotional items are already accounted for within Neill County's annual budget and its provisions are operational in nature, making the policy unnecessary. Rescinding policy fifteen dash six promotional items has no financial implication. The existing budget includes allocations across multiple departments for purchasing promotional items to support various programs and events. The corporate budget is primarily used to fund general giveaway items, including pens, notepads and small branded merchandise. Examples of such items include the front desk event items, pens distributed at the front desk or during community events. This Discovery Night swag, items like yogos and coloring books designed for children, branded merchandise, items such as ball caps, coffee mugs, water bottles, flyswatters, rain gauges and sweaters. These promotional items are frequently used as door prizes or giveaways and are occasionally donated at local organizations upon request. Recent examples of donations include contributions to Community Futures Women's Day Luncheon, Farmer's Bonds Bill, Ladies Bonds Bills, Torrington Curling Club. The total budget for promotional items under the corporate budget ranges from approximately twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. Earlier today, well, just right, ten seconds ago, Teresa Cochrane presented a report that provided a detailed breakdown of the corporate items. Um, budget, including both budget and actual expenditures. Um, the figure I've provided reflects only the I've provided reflects only the portion specifically allocated to promotional items, which is why it's lower than previously reported. So today, council has the option to delete this policy, amend this policy, or direct administration to bring back further information.
Okay, and thank you for that, Ms. Vander Cool. Questions, discussion? What's the wish here? Counselor Cunningham?
Sorry, I should have asked this before, but when Ms. Cochran was presenting that budget, one thing I was unclear of was there was an item in there that said council flowers. I can't remember exactly what it said, but I'm just wondering what that falls under because I know for us as council, anytime we've had flowers for when we've had someone pass or whatever, we just pay for that ourselves. So I'm just wondering what, what's, what's entailed in that line item?
Sure, I can speak to that through the chair. So that is council flowers and gifts. So if a counselor, a previous council that has been on council has passed away, we will send flowers to the family as, as that. We also have in there, if you were going to another municipality because they were having a grand opening of some sort, we would provide a gift or some sort of picture for them, and that's where that money would come from.
Okay, so I'm just curious if I could get for clarity, please. The promotional items policy covers everything that we just spoke of when you were presenting on screen, or is this policy only specific to corporate budget?
Mr. Hogan, you want, go ahead.
Through the chair, this is only specific to those, those items that we're giving out externally. So whether that is the one just mentioned that we're doing that way or the general promotional items that you'll, you'll see. The, it's one of the reasons, I think, for when we're looking at removing this policy or to even amend it, is a number of those promotional items are within the budgets for that specific event. So as an example for our ratepayer evenings, that budget includes some of the promotional items. It's not coming from a separate line, but this is only the external things.
Deputy Reeve McGee?
It seems to me from history, and I'm going way back, maybe even before Ms. Counselor Whitstock's time.
None of us remember that part.
But I do believe this policy came into effect way back when it did because at the time, there was a lot of discussion about whether there should be any of this happening at all. And it wanted to be clear that council expects our administration to have some promotional items for those purposes. And I, I think the reason, the reason to consider rescinding this is because it's become an acceptable way of doing business and commonplace to have that rate through our budget. So maybe we've outgrown the need, is my point.
Counselor Phobes?
So then if we remove this policy, how do we as council determine what's going in? Because this was a very enlightening report because I didn't actually know what we were spending across the whole organization on promotional items. So when I look at that number, it's quite large and lengthy for the, for the people in the public that are paying for it, including industry.
Ms. Cochran?
Thank you. Through the Reeve to Counselor Phobes. I just want to clarify that it's not all promotional items in the budget that I presented to you today. The reason why we weren't able to get more granular is we didn't have the time to sift through each one of the expenditures to determine what was promotional items, what was branding, what was marketing, and what was communications. So it is misleading, and over the next number of years, we'll be able to have better refined data for you. But in this current state, that number does not include all promotional items. We do not spend that on promotional items. We just weren't able to get more granular. We just didn't have the time.
Counselor Phobes?
Well, then in hearing that, I would like to see this policy remain until you get that data up and running for us to be able to hold you accountable for the stuff that's going into budget because that is our job to be fiscally responsible, whether you like it or not.
Mr. Hogan?
I just want to clarify. I take a little bit of offense to the whether you like it or not statement. We're well aware that that is part of council's rule. We do try to maintain fiscal responsibility. Having the policy remain in place until those other reporting structures are in place is, is absolutely an option that, that council can undertake and not one that administration would be opposed to.
Counselor Phobes?
And respectfully, whether you liked my comment or not, this is the stuff that I deal with daily from the public when they read our RFDs. So when they read this RFD and saw that we went up almost $20,000 from two years to this next one, they want to know why we went up that much. I'm accountable to it, Mike, I'm, or sorry, Mr. Hogan. So I do apologize if you didn't like my statement, but those are the things I constantly deal with from the public on a regular basis.
Did you want to respond?
Not at this time.
Okay. I think that as council, we are aware of our responsibilities, and I also firmly believe that administration and staff are very aware of the responsibility that they have also to be careful in the way they expend taxpayer dollars. So I think there's an acknowledgement that needs to be made that it's difficult to decipher currently, based on the way we account for things, exactly what's promotional, what's marketing, what's whatever in this area of things that are being created and branded in Neale County. And so perhaps the last comment I'll make is we look forward to the improvements that you've suggested, Ms. Cochran, are coming in terms of how we account for this and the ability to break that down in the future. What's in front of us currently is a discussion around whether or not we are prepared to either rescind the promotional items policy or retain it. If we retain it, we need to retain it with the understanding that it's not inclusive of all the expenditures that are happening in terms of marketing and promotion and, and branded merchandise for our own staff and ourselves. So it's a wish of council. We either have a motion to rescind or retain, and that's what I would be looking for at this point unless there's further discussion required. Counselor Cunningham?
I'm just wondering if maybe at this time, like there, there was some new information. Like, like I have to say, when I did see that budget, some of that was new to me. And so I, I do really appreciate the information that'll come forward from this. So I'm just wondering if it would be possible at this time to just leave it as is and look forward to that information, where maybe we can make a more fulsome, for myself, I just feel maybe I would like that information before I go forward with, with this. But I do really appreciate the information when.
So what information specific are we thinking we might get?
Well, I think as, as, like I, I did get a call as well, not from someone in my division, someone, one of our ratepayers that did ask me why, why in one year is that budget going up $20,000? And I just didn't feel that I was knowledgeable enough on that to explain that to them. And I think, as Ms. Cochran said, like we just, I mean, and this, this is just the way it is. And like I said, it's very complicated, but I don't think we know for sure which line items are going where. And I, I just would feel more comfortable in being able to answer those ratepayer questions a bit better when that full information comes back, like whether that's in the next year, or maybe I won't be here, I don't know. But just maybe I would feel more confident in answering those questions for the ratepayers.
Okay, we, I don't disagree or, but what's in front of us is a request for a decision. So either we're going to make a motion to retain the policy, make a motion to rescind it, receive for information. We need a motion in front of us to finalize whatever direction we're going to go. So at this point, that's as the Reeve, I'm looking for a direction from council to determine what we're going to do. So Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
So I'll make the motion that council receives this for information and await further information from the relevant department, or however you would want to word it.
And again, I guess I would be seeking clarification of what that further information might be.
Well, I think Ms. Cochran just kind of, she explained it quite well, that they, they don't have the mechanism currently to know which, I'm not sure the best way to explain it, Ms. Cochran, you could do it better for me, but what, she did an eloquent job of explaining it, that they don't have those mechanisms in place right now to know which, where the items are going to or for what purpose. And so I would just feel more confident in answering those ratepayer questions when we have that information. And I think Ms. Cochran said, like she more than happy to get it. It's just going to maybe take some time, and I'm willing to wait for that.
Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Through Ms. Chair, a couple of things, just for some clarity. The, what in the, in the presentations conveyed is we don't have that, that ability without going through a complete manual review of all the receipts and stuff like that. So we could invest a lot of staff time to get that. We're not sure that that's valued to the council's discussion without going through every payment, every receipt, in terms of the broad, the broad picture that, that we're showing. With the implementation of, of budgeting software, a lot of that's going to resolve itself. And so to, to that end, I think part of it is not necessarily, if the motion is that we're waiting for their information, there's not tangible further information coming. It's part of a refinement process in budget. So if council's outcome of this is to main, have the policy stay in effect, then receiving it for information or that council approve the policy 15-6 without changes, that type of motion would be suitable.
Okay, so Counselor Cunningham, so if your motion is just that council received for information, that leaves this policy in place? And is that sufficient, or do you need, do you want something more?
I guess I would just ask administration, like would you be comfortable with that? Like knowing that there is some information maybe that people are looking for, like that we could leave the policy? Or does it hinder your ability to do what you need to do with this current policy being in place right now?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, no, this is, it's council's policy. If you, if you want it in place, we continue to operate as we have been. So, no, it doesn't hinder.
Okay, so again, Counselor Cunningham, with the motion that council received for information policy 15-6 promotional items, with the understanding that you have that that leaves this policy in place, is that adequate for what you're asking? Okay. All right. Is there any, Counselor Phobes, please?
And the reason why I requested this information is because I had no idea where this was all outlined within our budget. And so it was a little shocking to me when I saw what we are actually budgeting for promotional, whatever the promotional items are, whether that's for staff, our firefighters, whatever that looks. I did not realize that, because it is strewn throughout our whole entire budget. So now that it's been collectively put here, I'm, I have people that are looking at that number and are a little alarmed by the number.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Whitstock?
Thank you. Mr. Reeve, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what I heard Mr. Gannon say is that we've purchased promotional items for sale that have gone as branding at Horseshoe Canyon, but no place in here does that come back as income, revenue, on the, on the revenue side. So there, there is an increase in this budget, but that being stated, we've also received revenue back. And I don't know what the number is. I'm sure somebody knows someplace, but not that I need the number. But all I'm saying is I think what we've done here is we've, we've, we've thrown some stuff into the expense side, but we haven't recognized revenue. And my other question, well, it's not a question. I don't want to be the only guy running around in a county vehicle at a parade not throwing candy. So I think it's important that we promote Neale County. And whether that be with frisbees, fly swatters, candy, what have you, we have to be seen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Cunningham?
So could we get that information? Because I think that would be really helpful, like if we're missing that revenue piece?
Do we understand that we're talking about less than .2 of 1% of our entire budget?
Well, I understand that I got a phone call asking me why we went up $20,000 in one year, and I.
But it was explained, sorry. Ms. Cochran, if you want to go back to your report where you addressed why those two items went up, that clarified why we increased by that number. So if you would just go back and for the sake of council, if you would help us to understand that again, please.
Yes, thank you. Through the Reeve to council. So looking at the breakdown of my spreadsheet when I got the information from the managers, there's various items included in the 2024 budget that weren't in the other budget. So for planning and development, there was an increase in 2024 due to public engagement, house-shaped magnets where landlords could put their rural emergency purposes. There were sticky pads for the township roads. In addition, under corporate items, we had more employees. So our employee yearly swag allotment went up for our swag events, in addition to our all-staff day where we do a little bit of swag. And in human resources, there was a little bit of an increase due to the fact, well, quite a bit of a budget increase due to the, all the career fairs that we were then going to and bringing our branding to. And then lastly, the items for increase was around the Horseshoe Canyon rebranding and our opportunity to build upon those promotional items. The breakdown is in the RFD that shows exactly where the budgets and the amounts were allocated. But it won't be a ongoing increase year over year. It was a one-year increase. So 2025 will look a lot like 2023.
Okay, thank you. Does that help with the clarity at all, or not really? So we do have a motion that's in front of us, that we received for information policy 15-6 promotional items, and that basically just leaves the policy in place. Is there any further clarification or discussion required? Counselor Cunningham?
Can you please advise me? I'd be willing to remove this motion from the table.
Well, this motion just leaves the policy in place. It doesn't, we're either going to make a motion to receive for information, which leaves it in place, or we're going to make a motion to rescind. And if the wish is that we leave it in place, then this motion does exactly that. And it has no, it's not putting anything more either on administration or taking anything away from administration for, it's our policy. And if we feel it's appropriate that it remain in place, it's fine. Counselor Phobes, please?
So my question will be addressed to the counselors around this table. Did you have the idea that we were spending that type of money when it was all compounded together?
Counselor Christie, go ahead.
I was, I knew the number would be large. When I see it all consolidated, it doesn't really concern me because we have to promote what we do, and we have to respect the staff that we have to honor what they do, both training and, and promotion. I think in the relation of the budget, it's realistic. I'll be interested to see where it evolves to when we get more of a, the, the, some history that's more identified than what we've had before. This is a consolidated number that's been ongoing, that's finally come together. So I, and no single area to me is overspent.
Okay. Any other comments or questions in response to Counselor Phobes? I guess my comment would be is I'm not surprised to see what the number is based on the explanation that came from Ms. Cochran around why the increase and that the anticipation is it will go back to a number more like 2023. I guess I'm good with what's in front of us. Okay, go ahead.
So then with the staff closing and allowance, does that go in on the bulk of staff wages, including what we do for them? So is this number here included in the staff wage, the 10 million, almost, I think it's 11 now, million dollars that we pay in staff wages?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, no. The approximately 13. Through the chair, no, the approximately 13,000 to 14,000 that's budgeted for that is a separate item.
All right, we still have a motion in front of us to receive for information, policy 15-6 promotional items. Is there any further discussion required to the motion? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I am going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, it is now 25 minutes after 12, and so we are going to be in recess. I'm going to suggest we be in recess till 1 o'clock and return at that point in time. We're in recess.
All right, it is one oh three and I am going to call our council meeting back to order. And the next item on our agenda is seven point one which is community grants round one for the twenty twenty five year. And Ms. Van Der Kool, if you could please.
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Eaves. So today I bring you community grants for nonprofit organizations, round one. So the round one deadline was on Wednesday. So the round one deadline was on Wednesday, March fifth, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty five. There were a total of five eligible applications received. The total amount requested was eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty nine dollars and fifty cents. The twenty twenty five operating budget has thirty thousand dollars budgeted for both round one and round two. Council does have sufficient funds to approve all applications if they wish to do so. I will now read through all the applications. If you have any questions about any of these applications, please feel free to interrupt. So the first application today is from the Troschu Valley Historical Society. They would like to create the Troschu in District History book. This would be the third edition. The second edition was released back in two thousand and five. This group of individuals believe that preserving our history is important and needs some technology to get them started. The total project cost is one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, and they're asking for nine hundred and sixty dollars from the county. We have provided them funding in the past and are listed in the comment section on the summary of applications, which is just right here on page seventy five. The next application today is from the Three Hills Good Health Club. They have been a nonprofit since nineteen seventy nine, and they purchased their store in nineteen ninety nine. They are asking for funding to help replace their HVAC system in their building. The total project cost is sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty nine dollars, and they're asking for eight thousand, nine, ninety four dollars and fifty cents from the county. The county has not provided them funding in the past. The third application is from Three Hills Minor Softball Association. They would like to buy new jerseys and ball equipment. The total project cost is four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety five cents, and they're asking the county for two thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars. The county provided them funding back in twenty twenty three to purchase softball equipment for girls seven to thirteen in the amount of two thousand dollars. Our fourth application is from the Carbon Legion. They would like to purchase a pine wood derby track, start gate, and end timer. Their total project cost is five thousand and twenty dollars, and they are asking for twenty five hundred dollars from the county. Back in twenty twenty two, the organization asked and received forty five hundred dollars to build a soapbox derby starting gate. This one is now moved away from the village, and they need a replacement. Our last application is from our friends from the Huxley Community Association. They would like to replace the retaining wall at the Huxley Curling Rink. The organization outlined how they will fix it and the costs associated with fixing the wall in their application. The project cost is around nine thousand dollars, and they're asking for forty five hundred dollars. We have provided this organization funding in the past and is listed in the comment section in the summary of applications. So that concludes my review of the applications. Council has the option today to approve all five applications totaling eighteen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents, or they have the option to select a few certain applications. But please remember that in the policy under five point two, it states that grant funding will be approved in the full amount requested or not approved at all. Council has the option to defer this decision to allow administration to bring further information.
Okay, thank you for that. I understand there's some questions that wanted to be asked, and perhaps there was a desire to have a closed conversation about them. So before we get into a more involved conversation, do we want to consider a closed session just to have that clarification? Okay, Counselor Cunningham, please.
I'll make a motion to move into closed, FOIP, Section sixteen, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party.
Okay, thank you for that. So we do have that motion that the meeting goes into closed session under Section sixteen, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party by Counselor Cunningham. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. So we are in closed. Okay, so we had a motion to go into closed session regarding Section sixteen, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party. We had a motion to return to open session at one nineteen. We recessed to allow the return of the public. It is now one twenty, and our meeting will resume in open session. All right, we are now back to our conversation around community grants, round one. Our usual process is Ms. Vanderkuul will have a Excel spreadsheet or something up in front of us. Oh, there it is, right in front of me now. And we get to vote yes, no, yes, no, and that would confirm. So my suggestion. Yes. Yep. My suggestion is that we take each one individually, and if we have specific questions to that one, we can ask at the time, and then we'll poll ourselves as counselors to determine whether we approve or not. Is that acceptable process? All right. So we'll start with the Troschu Valley Historical Society and their request for nine hundred and sixty dollars to create a new volume three history book. Are there any questions specific to that application? If not, are you prepared to be asked? Okay, Counselor Christie, I'm going to start with you.
Yes.
Counselor Forbes?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
And myself, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So that one is approved. So the next one is the Three Hills Good Health Club, request for help to replace the HVAC system in the building. Are there any questions related to that application? Counselor Forbes?
While I was reading what they presented to us in their document, a couple of things stood out for me. The wording around benefiting customers and staff alike. If this is an organization that is doing nonprofit, why would we call them customers? The other one that stands out is the remaining funds will be raised. Have they not raised any? Plus, I have a ton of questions around, does the organization have reserves that they should have been putting away for that? I guess not my, to worry about that, but I do think to be fiscally responsible with public funds that I have to ask that question. I also did a little bit of investigating about research. I will say that the Three Hills Chambers gave really excellent information. One of the things that was a standout for me as well was is when I read this, the society meetings are held at a different location than the one they're asking for the HVAC to be put on. So I'm not sure if it would be possible for them to come in and explain to us how their organization works. I just feel like there's a lot of things for myself personally that I would like to ask them, but because that's such a large quantity of money that they're requesting from the county and taxpayers' dollars, I just would like to have a conversation with them around more about how their organization runs, because I don't really know, and I couldn't find a lot on the internet for it.
Okay, so you have some unanswered questions. One of the things in terms of this grant program is that the funds have to be spent within that year. So if they don't have the matching funds at this point in time, and they So if they don't have the matching funds at this point in time and they have to still raise those, they may not be able to complete the project in this current year. So then, how does that impact that funding? Can somebody help in that way, Mr. Hogan? Because the program's set up that way, would they then be required to repay those funds? I know it says somewhere they can ask for an extension as well. So how, how would that work?
The theme is the chair could really work however council wanted it to. And what I mean by that is if you, if you wanted to look at an extension, that is something councils done in the past, just on the vein of rather seeing the money used for its purpose than returned. The other option that, that has sometimes been used by municipalities is to approve the funding pending confirmation that the project is going forward. So in that case, what we would do is we wouldn't actually release the funding until we got confirmation that the project was moving forward. And if we don't get that confirmation, then we don't release the funding. But it does allow the group to know that they've got that funding in the bank, so to speak, so long as the project goes forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions with regard to this specific application? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Are we prepared to make a decision? Okay, I'm gonna poll us again and I'm gonna start with you, Councillor Forbes.
I'm a no.
Councillor McGee?
I'm also a no.
I am a no as well. Councillor Cunningham?
I'm a no as well.
Kind of a moot point, but Councillor Christie?
I'm a no, but I would, if they wanted to reapply in person, I would listen.
And, and maybe that's part of the communication process is that we can get back to them to say that there seem to be significant gaps in the information and council was left with a lot of questions. And should they want to reapply, that they could do that, but we probably look for an in-person presentation to council. All right, the Three Hills Minor Ball Association, Minor Softball Association requests for equipment and jerseys. Are there any questions related to this specific application? Not seeing any, so prepared to poll ourselves. Deputy Reed McGee?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes.
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 Okay, so that is approved. The next one on our list is the Royal Canadian Legion Branch one sixty-one, Carbon, requests for a pine wood track, start gate and end timer. And I guess I, I personally had some questions with regard to this one around, in their application, they applied for the track, but the contribution that they're indicating on their application that they would make toward the project is all strictly event-related, not the project. And so I guess I have some concerns with this and as such, I will be voting no on this particular application.
I'm also a no, even that's a very curious.
I'm a no, but I encourage them to bring forward more information, for sure.
I would say yes, because it's for youth, but I like to have more information. Personally, I would support it if I was approved.
I'm a no as well. For the same reason, I'm also a no.
Okay, and again, I would say here's an opportunity for clarification and better understanding and certainly if they want to reapply, that the opportunity exists, but we're looking for more clarity. Okay, the last one is the Huxley Community Association, the retaining wall that's needed on the outside of the curling rink to keep the land in place. Any questions related to this project? Not seeing any, I'm gonna ask you, Councillor Whitstock, to begin with responding.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
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 Deputy Reed?
Yes.
And myself, I am also a yes. So it appears to me that we have just expended seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars of a possible total for the year of thirty thousand. So there's plenty of room in round two for... So, Mr. Hogan, I, if you or Ms. Vanderkuul or whoever has that responsibility could respond to the two individuals or two organizations that were no's just to help clarity for the next application, that would be greatly appreciated. All right, that's that one. So what we need now would be an overarching motion, am I correct in saying that? To provide grant applications totaling seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to Troschu Historical Society, Three Hills Minor Ball Softball Association and the Huxley Community Association. Someone willing to make that motion? Councillor Forbes?
So moved.
Okay, so the motion is that council approved the recommended, or council approved grant applications totaling seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for Troschu Valley Historical Society, Three Hills Minor Softball Association and Huxley Community Association. Any questions regarding that motion? Okay, I'm gonna ask the question then. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda, having lost my agenda, is disposition of delegation business and eight point one, accurate assessment delegation and Ms. Vanderkuul, I believe this one's yours. Or, Mr. Hogan, this one's yours.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this, they're, coming out of the accurate assessment delegation, this is simply for council's information. So that's all we're looking for is a, is a motion reminding us of such.
Councillor Cunningham?
Just wanna say thank you to them for coming too. I always find them such a wealth of information and they're so open to receiving emails and calls from us, so I really appreciate that. So with that, I'll make a motion that council receive for information, the accurate assessment presentation.
Okay, so thank you for that. I would echo those sentiments. It's appreciated the fact that they come and that they're very responsive and informative and help us get clarity around assessment and how that does or does not work. So, thank you for the motion. Is there any further discussion to the motion we received for information? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is council fol, council and committee reports. Almost got ahead of myself there. Just taking direction from the Deputy Reed, who said we could maybe not do them.
Had a little influence.
So we have three council and committee reports. The first one is nine point one, Community Futures. Councillor Christie?
There you go. I've handed out the new executive summary that we're gonna have for every meeting, but hopefully I'll be able to forward so that it's in our council package the week after our Community Futures meeting in Strathmore. One of the things I wanna highlight today is they had eighty-one nominations in the South in the first quarter. And as of this morning, we're only at sixteen and we're part of that second quarter, so before the first of April. Nominate somebody, or maybe two or three.
Okay, good information. Any questions for Councillor Christie? If not, the next item on our agenda was nine point two, the Cape. And that's you, Deputy Reed McGee.
Thank you. We had our meeting Thursday and I'm sorry, I missed giving you the minutes and I will have those in our next packages, for sure. There are changes with how all, all Rita's will be funded through the government, so for a while there, they were really generous and offered us even an increase in what they gave us from Governor Alberta to run as operational funding to be utilized for programs or whatever. And that will no longer be able to be accessed. So that means a loss of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That was a big component of how we would do business. So in response to that, we have started to, again, relook at our, our strategies for both just as an organization, so what will be our priorities, expecting that our budget will be lower. And then we also are looking at what could be our sustainability plan? How could we make, have other ways of bringing in dollars to help us operate and what we would do? So we're both, both of those things are still through the process. We've had initial reports that I outlined for you. The highlights to our strategic plan will be that we will want to customize community investor profiles, so they're always up to date and that could be the number one thing that municipalities can count on. That we have dynamic regional profiles, spotlight central Alberta. So again, we'll do that both as a regional thing that will always be up to date as well so that we can attract businesses to the area. And then our networking opportunities, which we also mean includes some of our educational opportunities and those types of things. We would be adjusting those according to the, I guess, the environment of the time, of what's needed to best assess what the region needs. So those, that's the initial statement and our next meeting will wrap up and pass the actual plan. With, looking at our sustainable strategies about, around the budget, there's been a few ideas brought forward. And I really am looking forward to maybe having a bit of a in closed session conversation with you and I will be bringing RFD the next time we gather, for us to be able to do that with some of those specific questions. They're not immense, but they also are quite a change in philosophy on a couple of details that I think deserve a good conversation. And I certainly didn't have time to bring that because of course, this meeting was after our RFDs were put together for this meeting. The other financial concern that I thought you should be updated with is they've changed, the government of Alberta has changed how all of our grants, should we receive any grants? So that grant funding's still there, but it's gonna be by project base only. So it used to be that we had an operational funding plus projects if we wanted to off. Now it's gonna be projects only, so we could still end up maybe with the same amount of money should we have projects that get approved. At any rate, any of those grants now will require a larger audit system as well as just simply annually, we need a larger audit system. We are having difficulties understanding why, because we believe what they said is addressing, we already address in the way we do our audits, but that will, we're already paying fifteen thousand dollars a year, we will now have to pay at least ten to fifteen more. And we're a pretty small, small bunch for having to do that. I mean, I think that's pretty remarkable when our, our budget was, was taken away. And this expense is going to have to be incurred in this budget year, even though the budget, of course, was set already a year ago and we're supposed to stick to that budget. But they've increased, you know, we're familiar with that, but the Cape is dealing with having, having to deal with this challenge of where is that funding gonna come from? For simply the audit.
Is that tongue in cheek or?
So, so that's the updates and I'll keep you more informed, but you'll see some very cohesive, I'm very energized by where we're going with, we have quite a large new board and it's going to be very interesting, but very trim compared to what we used to see.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions for Councillor McGee? If not, then the next item on that list is nine point three, reporting on the recent RMA conference in Edmonton as of a couple of weeks ago, or not even a couple of weeks ago, last week. Time flies. So, Councillor McGee, did you wanna kick this one off and then we'll allow other councillors to contribute if they so wish?
Sure, I, I just wrote down a few things that I handed out. The two sessions I attended were the Rural Economic Development Session, which was excellent, trying to really promote the fact that municipalities used to think this is a nice to have, to have economic development piece, but the reality is the way the world is moving, it's the only way to sustainability. It's just highly required, so I really, of course, being someone who's passionate about us finding economic development in ways that sustain us as a county, I found that really reaffirming that that was the overarching message that they started and ended the day with. Camrose County is an outstanding example of doing a great job of economic development and one of the examples they shared, and they were one of the presenters, they shared how they have their own community economic development working group and that they have been able to do quite a great job of promoting the region and expanding. They, they're just really interesting to look at, I think. So what they have is two councillors and four local business owners together and they make objectives and they're doers and they get, they've had lots of success with it. There are other structures that can be used for economic development, which include the regional programs, something specific to a project, cluster development and so forth. I also, of course, have to tell you guys, because you know me, I always have to say the things I love. I had attendees at my table who did go to the Drumholler Dinosaur Days back when they had the Try to Get Into the Guinness World Book Records of Dinosaurs Day. And she apologized for not doing more homework, but also didn't really know how to do more homework, to find out how she could have enjoyed her trip there and from north of Red Deer to there to appreciate what's in our area. So I thought that was really a great story to tell about why we are doing what we're doing, is so that we can answer those questions and really we'll see benefits because people are, are asking to, to know how to be enjoying our area. The other course I took is Rethinking Approaches to Wicked Challenges by Gordon McIntosh. A lot of you know him, he does a lot of other training around municipalities. It was a course that he usually takes three full days to present, need John packed in the hour and a half session. So it was just a great start to understand the concept of what the difference is between a wicked challenge and a basic problem. And a lot of us could relate to how extensively difficult the wicked challenges are and, you know, increased crime, homelessness were answers, were ideas of some that you might come up with. How he defines them is that they are very, that a problem that is difficult to define in a very specific form and clear, as well as a problem that is hard to find clear solutions to would be what would he calls a wicked challenge. And so the, the concept therefore then is the more stakeholders you involved in finding problem solutions. And it's very multifaceted and very long time use of finding the information you need to solve the problem. So of course, he encouraged us to take the three days to understand that better. But there's lots of other interesting, great things that happened at RMA and I'm sure I'll, I'll take a rest if somebody else can contribute to this conversation.
Okay, Councillor Forbes, go.
So RMA was a little different than what I'm used to attending, so I look forward to where they're going with whatever that. So RMA was a little different than what I'm used to attending, so I look forward to where they're going with whatever that vision may look like. I will, would just like to say thank you to um everyone who contributes to me getting educated for um areas within that help. So I took a strategic planning course um to help with housing and developing a strategic plan in the future here. So I look forward to having conversations with the board and our CIO around that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Cunningham?
Yeah, so just to build on what the other two said, it's always, always take something away from RMA. It was found it was a little bit of a different tone this year, but um I took the Land Use Planning and Development Course for, I don't know how many times I've taken it, but every time I take it, I take something else away and especially the people around the table, I think that's where a lot of the learning comes from. Really enjoyed the guest speaker Pamela Barnum. She's a tactical influence, former undercover police officer and federal prosecuting attorney. And her one quote was imagine what it would be like to live as a different person with a different name, identity, a background. And I found that kind of odd that she'd do that with a room full of elected officials. But anyhow, um, yeah, she was really, yeah, maybe we all need to go undercover at times. But um, yeah, she was really, really good and an excellent speaker. So, yeah, again, just thanks for the opportunity to be able to go. It's always a great few days, tiring but very good, so.
Okay, um, I guess my comments are around um first and foremost, congratulations to Deputy Reeve McGee for finishing her E O E P requirements. So um now she knows it all. There's a resource for us to turn to when we have questions. No, seriously, um, you've put in the time and the effort to finish the E O E P, the eight courses required. And so congratulations, it was nice to see you get your certificate. And uh, so just congratulations on that. And then just a word of appreciation to Mr. Hogan. Thank you for um your presentation on um RMA and the job that administrators and others do. And um, I know you promised me you'd be in under your fifteen minutes, but you managed to challenge that goal and exceed your fifteen minutes. But the information that you provided, I think, was quite useful. And for the individuals, particularly administrators and administration staff that uh were there that aren't a part of your group, that probably was very productive and useful information for them and for myself sitting there listening, uh helped me get a better understanding of what that organization does as well. So kudos to you. Job well done, so thank you. If there are no other comments regarding RMA, um I would be looking for a motion to receive the council and committee report as presented. Councillor Christie?
So moved.
Thank you for that. So we, any discussion? I don't think so, so all in favor? Oh, sorry, councillor Christie.
My comment is nominate some business, dammit.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the motion? Let's do that now. So I'm sure that you're voting intentionally, thank you. That motion is carried unanimously. Wasn't sure whether that was a twitch or nervous reaction or what. All right, the last thing on our agenda at this point is council follow-up action list. Are there any questions related to the council follow-up action list? Councillor Cunningham?
I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Hogan for um getting those two letters off to Minister Newdorff. I didn't bug him this time at the bear pit. I thought I would await to uh see his response to those letters. So I look, I look forward to hearing his replies, so thank you for that.
Okay. I guess I would have a question with regard to the um Travel Drumheller proposal and maybe um Mr. Gannon, can you give us an update on where we are um with the proposal that they came forward with around the long table and the event at Horseshoe Canyon?
Uh, thank you through the chair. We continuously have conversations with Travel Drumheller. There has been no formalized plan that has been submitted to us at this point, but they're still working on the background with uh many different entities to see on uh how that may be developed and moving forward. And they're quite aware of council's interest for administration to participate or support and bring it back should there be any financial implications.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions on the council act, council follow-up action list? I'm not seeing any, so I would entertain a motion to receive um the council follow-up action list as presented. Thank you, councillor Whitstock. All in favor? And that is carried unanimously as well, so thank you. And of course, um, the last item on our agenda, there is no closed session, is probably a motion that none of us ever really appreciate, but meeting adjourned at one fifty PM. So we are adjourned. Thank you for your time and attention and participation and patience with me. Appreciate that.